Good evening. I call this April 22nd meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Councilmember Rao is expected momentarily. He's dressed running a little late. Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream, and those who are watching recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is "Connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services." Officer Thompson is our sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. This evening, I will be leading our invocation. Let us take a moment to pause in gratitude as we begin tonight's meeting. Today, across the globe, people are celebrating Earth Day, a reminder of our shared responsibility to care for the planet we all call home. Here in Morrisville, we've worked with intention and purpose to lead by example, investing in green energy, advancing sustainable technology, and encouraging community engagement that empowers every resident to be part of the solution. I'm proud of the commitment we have shown as a town and of the partnerships and progress that continue to grow from our collective efforts. As we gather this evening, let us also reflect on the value of this very moment. Every day, we're given a gift, an opportunity to make a difference, to serve one another and to deepen the relationships that sustain us, whether in public service, in our neighborhoods, or in our families. It is those connections built on care, trust, and compassion that truly shape the future we hope to see for ourselves and for generations to come. May we approach tonight's work with open hearts, thoughtful minds, and a shared sense of purpose. May our decisions reflect not only the needs of today, but also the vision we hold for a more connected, more sustainable, and more compassionate tomorrow. Thank you. All who are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Okay. Is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's regular agenda? Oh, actually, just a second. We have a request from staff to add an agenda item discussing a personnel matter under closed session pursuant of NCGS 143-318-11A6. Is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's agenda with this addition?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Robati. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0. There are seven items on this evening's consent agenda. FY25 Budget Ordinance Amendment, Municipal Service District Fund, resolution appointing members to the Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee, resolution authorizing application for a part of grant, I almost said party grant, approval of March 2025 Town Council Meeting Minutes, resolution authorizing the design-build-delivery method for 125 International Drive, resolution awarding service sidearm to Lieutenant David Aldridge, and resolution declaring support of preserving federal tax exemption municipal bonds. Would any member of council like to pull any item for discussion? Then I would entertain a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thanks. So we reversed it. A motion by Councilmember Robati, a second by Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously 6-0. We are now at proclamations. We will have one proclamation read during the meeting. There are also other proclamations acknowledged by council included for reference in our agenda. At this time, Mayor Potem Garamela will read the proclamation recognizing National Small Business Week.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation recognizing May 4, 2025 to May 10, 2025 as National Small Business Week, whereas the United States Small Business Association, SBA, has recognized the contributions of the entrepreneurs and small business owners for over 60 years through Small Business Week, and whereas as part of the activities, the SBA honors impactful business owners, entrepreneurs, and the community members from all 50 states and U.S. territories with National Small Business Week awards, and whereas we encourage Morrisville and the surrounding area business owners and entrepreneurs to take advantage of programming offered through the SBA this week, including in-person events and a virtual education summit, and whereas the town of Morrisville has partnered with staff, committee members, multiple chamber of commerce, area workforce agencies, higher education institutions, financial institutions, and other entities to learn about the diverse business population in Morrisville and develop the responsive programming to meet those needs. And whereas there are approximately 200 businesses reflected in our small business directory already to do business with those who live, work, and play in Morrisville, whereas the town of Morrisville encourages all community members to support local businesses as a vital part of our business and culture. Therefore, the Town Council of Town of Morrisville hereby recognize May 4, 2025 to May 10, 2025 as National Small Business Week. In Town of Morrisville, we thank the area business owners, entrepreneurs, community members for their unique contribution to Morrisville and its economy. Signed by Mayor and Town Clerk. I would like to call upon Amelia Hosin, if I caught your name last correctly.
Hi, thank you so much. The small business community here in Morrisville.
Want to say something?
Thank you so much. The small business community here for the town of Morrisville are the backbone of our community, and the town and the chamber are excited to partner on some really amazing events that we have upcoming. One of those will be an event in June focused on sustainability for small businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and welcome to the team. There were two other proclamations which we are acknowledging by council tonight, and they are the proclamation recognizing Air Quality Awareness Week and proclamation recognizing Frontline Worker Appreciation Month. Next on the agenda is Morrisville Speaks Public Comment. Town Clerk, do we have people signed up to speak tonight?
Up first, we have Linda Lyons, followed by Pete Martin.
Thank you very much. For those who have signed up to speak, please approach the microphone, stand when your name is called, begin by stating your name and residential address, and direct your comments to the council. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to ensure everyone has a fair opportunity to share their thoughts. A timer will start after you state your name and address, and a buzzer will sound when your time is up. We appreciate your cooperation in helping us manage time fairly for all our participants. And at this time, I'd also like to recognize the fact that Councilmember Rao is here with us, and that, I wanted to ask real quick, do you have any conflicts of interest or appearance of conflicts on anything on the agenda, sir?
No conflicts.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Lyons?
My name is Linda Lyons, 1005 Church Street, Morrisville. Hi, everyone, and thanks for giving me a few minutes to speak tonight. I just wanted to speak up about something that's been bothering me, and I think it's important we all pay attention to it, especially as our town continues to grow. I'm talking about the new development on Church Street, the parched townhome. If you're driven by there, you'll probably notice the same thing I have. There's just not enough parking. Families these days usually have two or three cars, especially with kids who drive, and development didn't plan for that at all. Now, people are parking tightly along Church Street, right up against the curb, sometimes even over the white line. It's cramped, it's messy, and it's honestly, it's dangerous. It's cramped, it's messy, and it's honestly, it's dangerous. Getting out of the car in that spot feels risky. And with cars sticking out into the road, there's a real chance someone could get hurt. I even called the fire department to ask about that lane, and they told me it was for residential parking. But that doesn't mean it's smart or safe. It feels like the developer just didn't want to use up land for proper parking, and instead, they pushed it out onto Church Street. And that brings me to a bigger point. When developers come before the town, they're selling us something. They all say things like, "These homes are affordable," or "Traffic won't be impacted." But let's be honest, any development adds traffic. And as for affordable, let's ask affordable for who? They might offer land it has changed for approval, but it's often land they can't build on anyway. They all want smaller roads, a home built right up to the street, which leaves no room for expansion down the road. And they'll tell us new homes fit in with the neighborhood when they truly don't. It all sounds great in a presentation, but once it's built, we're the ones who have to live with the results. So I'm just asking all of you, please take a close look at these proposals before giving the green light. Now, every project is a good fit. It's okay to say no. We're not against growth, but we do need to be smart about how it happens. This is our town, and we should protect what makes it a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure if I should speak now or during the public session because I'm going to talk about the land use changes. The change to land use, that's the...
So that's during the public hearing?
Yes.
Which is the one that's still open? So it would be appropriate to go ahead and speak at that time, Mr. Martin. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak at this time? Okay, do we have any email input? Okay. Is there anyone here in the audience this evening who didn't sign up who would like to speak on any subject except for our public hearing subject? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on. And just to close that out, as a reminder, we encourage the submission of written comments as they offer a valuable way for our community members to share their feedback. Please note our new public comment and public hearing email is now publicinput@morrisvillnc.gov. We are now at item 10, Administrative Reports. Administrative reports are provided for information only. Does council have specific questions regarding the FY2025 Quarter III Budget Financial Administrative Report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, the public hearings. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening. We now invite Elliot Ward, Planning Manager, forward to provide any updates to Town Council on the proposed amendment to the zoning map for Hamlet at Church Street. This public hearing opened on April 8th and is scheduled to close this evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening, Council.
As the mayor stated, I am providing updates for item 2025-46-0. As a reminder, the public, this is consideration of items to amend the zoning map for 808 Church Street and multiple parcels addressed zero Church Street to the conditional medium-density residential zoning district. So I just have a few updates from the previous meeting. The applicant has updated condition number six. This is basically stating what's in that condition. They have increased the percentage of affordable workforce units from 10% to 13.5%. This is an increase from 16 units to 21 units of the 156 that are planned. As a reminder, the 21 units is the density increase the applicant is asking for with this rezoning request. Again, this is that same condition, the highlighted language. The applicant has also added these three conditions to the proposed conditions list. At the April 8th meeting, the applicant discussed including electric vehicle conduits in all garage units, and they have now included that as condition 20. The applicant has provided a condition indicating they will use all native plant species for all landscaping, other than the additional buffer shrubs proposed in number 18 here. And also, three of the properties are not annexed into the town yet, and the applicant has provided a condition that they will submit an annexation application no later than submission of a site plan application. Council also asked at the April 8th meeting that I provide, that staff provide a chart indicating what conditions would be required with the buy-right subdivision and what conditions are exceeding UDO requirements. What is exceeding, move it up here, is shown here on the far right column and in the bolded text. This chart is also in the agenda packet as attachment five. And we can come back to any of these if you wish later. Just get through a couple more slides. Well, actually, that's all the slides that have updates. But there was also, like, four written public comments that were included as attachment six in the agenda packet as well. And that is it for updates from me. The applicant is also here again, and they have updates to their present, to the questions that were asked at last meeting they wish to speak on as well.
Is it the council's will to go ahead and hear from the applicant, and then we'll continue the public hearing? Does that sound good? Okay, the applicant may present at this time. If you could each give your name and your role for the record, appreciate it.
Spencer Merritt with Middleburg Communities Partner, Karen Riley.
I'm Al Smith, Riley, original owner and investor in this project.
We appreciate you guys speaking with us again today. You know, we heard the last meeting, the comments that the council provided us, and are hopeful to hear some additional commentary today that we can react to. You know, as you can see in the proposal, updated conditions, we took all the comments that we got and updated our conditions to reflect them. So we'd like to request any additional feedback that we can get that could help us to make this project something that everyone can be proud of and desire. You know, we updated the affordable housing units from the 10% that we had to the 13.5%. That sounds like a strange number, but it's really, you know, we basically were thinking about it, and you said we were under buy-right, 135. We're requesting 156. Let's just make the delta affordable. We feel like that, you know, makes it, you know, a pretty clear statement on our part that we're for that. There was a request at the last meeting to potentially revisit the affordability piece. Talked a little bit about the restrictions that we would be putting on this type of product. The HUD rents are based on apartment rents. This is obviously not apartments, this is standalone homes, and they're for rent. So we will be restricting our rents based on apartment rent. So while it's technically 80%, the discount we will be providing is much greater than that. And, you know, these will be for, you know, working folks in this community, which we feel like is delivering a differentiated product to the market. So, you know, in addition to the fact that we have affordability component that we're proposing, you know, I would like to reiterate that we are, we would call it 100% attainable. You know, with the way the housing is these days, where we are at the price point on a per-month basis is a significant discount to homeownership. You know, we're almost 50% less than what it would cost to own a median-priced home in the market, as well as not having down payments and providing an affordable option as well for folks who, you know, are downsizing, are new to the area for a job. You know, one of the questions we had last time is why Morrisville? And, you know, it's with proximity to work and proximity to amenities and different types of people having options to those things and having the ability to work in this community and work, you know, in the greater region. And this is such a great centrally-located place with great citizenship and great, you know, amenities. And we feel like it's a great entry point for folks from that perspective. You know, traffic is something that we've heard over and over again, and we fully understand that. We feel like the conditions that we've updated are basically everything that we are able to do from this property, you know, updating all of the write-in-write-outs, dedicating right-of-way, you know, which, you know, admittedly is part of the, any other buy-right site plan. You know, you'd have to dedicate right-of-way. We're dedicating technically more right-of-way than you would for a site plan because you would only have to do the right-of-way that was approved from NCDOT. We're dedicating both options. But, you know, we feel like, and something I don't know that has been clearly communicated, we, you know, it seems like you approve a project and it just appears. You know, we're going to have a long time of engineering and construction. You know, it will be, you know, first quarter of 2027 before any units are available for anyone to live in. So, I mean, by that time, Phase 1 of Aviation Boulevard should be complete. You know, we've requested kind of updated timelines on that, but that's basically where we are. You know, it seems like in any development of the road infrastructure is going to help the serious traffic concerns that everyone has. So, you know, and the right-of-way dedication and the payment lieu that we're providing are going to go a long way in helping to get Phase 2 off the ground. It, you know, by dedicating it, it saves taxpayers the dollars of actually having to acquire it. NCDOT's tax dollars, but tax dollars nonetheless. And with the PIL, it'll allow, I believe it goes towards beautification. So, you know, great things that you can do to make the roadway a better place for everybody. One of the things that we talked about also with affordability, one of the things that was requested last time was kind of a feeling or comment on, you know, what we do to impact tariff costs and things like that. And I think it's a good chance for us to let you guys understand kind of how we approach our construction process. And the, we are focused on, this will be the eighth execution of this product for us. We're able to dial in our costs and be very proactive and talk to our suppliers, guarantee pricing, pre-purchase. And when you go, if this was being developed by a single lot developer, home builder, you know, there's, each home is a different project. So each home is going to have a different, you know, basis, construction type, all kinds of different. I mean, they'll be within the required UDO, but it's, we have a lot more control on that. And, you know, you say, "Why are you going for, offering so much for 21 extra units?" We have a kind of a threshold for scale. And so when we, you know, get across that 150, we're able to really buy in bulk and guarantee that we can deliver affordable, attainable housing. So, you know, that's why we've been so focused on trying to get additional density is that it really helps us deliver a product that everyone can be proud of and that we're proud of and that people would be proud to live in, in this region. So, you know, we've done a lot of, well, we've added some conditions related to sustainability. That's something we are serious about as well. All our capital partners are serious about it. So it's something that we, you know, if there are additional things that people are aware of and would like to see us do, we'd be more than happy to discuss those things and integrate into the design. And, you know, another thing, you know, we've spoken, or spoken to the residents that live near us in some of those investment properties, and we're offering things to help with screening and anything that they would like to see done differently in the project. So we've really been trying to be, do as much as we can to get folks to like what we're doing. So we continue to do that. And so we would like to get some more feedback, but I think at this time, kind of based on where we are, I think we'd like to request a deferral of a vote to a later date. But would really like to get some feedback from the council and discussion and have the ultimate vote be deferred at a later date. I think Alton wanted to talk a little bit about the land.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name's Al Smith. I'm an original owner and developer of this property. We bought this property back around Y2K. This has been over 20-something years ago. Our company was based in Raleigh. We needed to expand. We were growing rapidly at that time. And we were going to build in Raleigh, and we started to look around, and we found this property in Morrisville. At the time, nobody was interested in it. There was nothing here. Nobody wanted to buy it. And we was in disrepair. Well, we looked at the location, and we could see that we could service all of our customers all around the triangle, Raleigh and Durham and Chapel Hill and the park. We decided it was a great place to do business. So we went to Wykonia, and we borrowed millions of dollars and invested in this property and the buildings there and improved it. As we did that, we brought the businesses here, and we also brought jobs to it. We brought 100 to 150 jobs to this location. We were very successful here. And we ran a good business. We were great corporate customers, corporate citizens, excuse me. And all of the years that we were here, I don't think we ever had one complaint from any neighbor or anybody, from the council, police, fire, anybody. We're good citizens. So we were happy to be here and we're still here. So several years after that, we had hoped to expand on the property, and our session hit, so we shelved the plans, and we didn't do so. Then we decided to expand again, and then the pandemic hit, and so we shelved them again. So now, here we are again. It's a little bit of a different development now because the zoning changed. And we weren't part of that, and we weren't notified of that at the time. The notification for that zoning change went to Atlanta, Georgia, to our real estate professionals down there. We never got the notice, but we didn't fight it. We went along with it, again, trying to be a good corporate citizen. Now, I couldn't be here at the previous meeting, but I was able to stream it, and I was on my way back to North Carolina. And during that meeting, there were several questions and comments, and one question concerned traffic. Now, way back then, traffic was bad even then. And part of that problem is a design issue. Church Street ended in the 54. McCraman Parkway ended in the 54. There were no lights then. You had to cross the road as best you could. It's a slow process. You also had Adams Products loading the trucks, and they're great corporate neighbors, by the way, trying to get out in the mornings, and then, of course, you add the railroad to it. So that added problems. The city, to their credit, have tried to make it a safer intersection, and have added stoplights. But this traffic issue was brought up. It seems that everybody wants to make it and say that it's our problem. This development isn't that big. It's going to have a negligible effect on the traffic in this region. So we just want you to know, it's always been bad there. And the money that's going to be needed for the improvements is going to have to come from our partners, Middleburg and ourselves, through time. You know, it's going to have to be borrowed and given to the city. Of course, the city mandates these improvements, but we also want to see the improvements. As Spencer said, these people are our customers, and we want to take care of them. We need them, they need us. So it's in our interest that this goes well, that we take care of the property. Another question was asked, "Why did we pick Morrisville?" Well, my corporate attorneys had told me about a company named Middleburg that was in Raleigh, and they had done some business with them, and they said, "You may want to speak with them." So I gave them a call, and we met. I looked them up, and I liked what they did. And so that's why they picked Morrisville to be here. Now, while I was riding on the road, I may have heard this incorrectly, but somebody on the committee referred to our community as crappy. Now, I've been doing business for over 40 years. I have developments in Raleigh all across the state. I've run C Corpses, LLCs, and I've never had anyone call our business as crappy. We run a great company and always have. We're always in the top tier of our customer satisfaction rating. I wanted to come here tonight and just mention that. By doing this a great job in our companies, that's how we stay in business. We hope that you will... We hope that you will agree with our philosophy and will help us in this endeavor, continue to be a good property in the city of Mooresville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Spencer. Did the other gentleman want to speak or just there for support?
Worth is with Longleaf Partners, or you can say Worth, but he's here. He's been representing us throughout the process, so if there are any questions about conditions and whatnot, he's here to help us answer those.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I do. I'm confused. So what business did you bring to Mooresville?
Raleigh bonded data storage, Raleigh bonded warehouse. We ran out of that property for years. We eventually got bought out by Archives One, which was bought out by Iron Mountain.
Okay, so Iron Mountain. But that's totally different from the development that these guys are proposing.
Well, that's our property. And we were going to develop that property, but certain things came up that stopped that process through the years. As a business person, you can't do everything that you want to all at once. Sometimes it takes years to get there. We were going to build warehouses and that was approved. Then they were down zoned. We came in possibly in the pandemic, we talked about putting an old retirement home there. And I was told that that was not a good idea and that people would be pounding on my door not to do so. So we met these folks. We felt like this was a good thing. We're in similar businesses and it was a good fit. So that's why we're here.
How are you in similar businesses?
Well, I own multifamily properties. I have developments. I do land development, that kind of.
All right. And I may be wrong about the development, but I seem to remember it was zoned very low density and we changed it to low density. Am I incorrect there?
It was zoned for commercial. That's why you have a commercial building there. Yes, it was. We purchased the property.
Mr. Ward, can you clarify for us?
Well, that may have been before our time.
Yeah, that, I'd have to go back and look. Yeah, that's a couple of decades ago before it was rezoned, but we can find out the information for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
If that would have been before my time, when we did the land use plan, it was very low density and we, we changed it to low density.
For the 2021 land use plan, yeah, it, it just, it remained at low density. So it was already low density.
But I think it was that very low density.
We'll, we'll clarify, but I'm pretty sure either way.
Irrelevant at this point. All right. Yeah, um, yeah, I was confused when you were talking about a business and bringing in jobs. I mean, with this development, your, um, storage doesn't go away, does it? That building will still be there.
That building will be there. We are not part of that now. This is leftover property that we had from that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for applicants at this time? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
No, I don't, I just wanted to, I don't have any questions about it. I need to, I want to thank you for the work you've done in addressing some of the issues and I want to thank you for considering Mooresville as an investment and appreciate your, um, your hard work on this endeavor.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao. Councilmember Rabbadi, please.
Were there any objections that were voiced by the, um, the zoning board that were not addressed in the presentation that you brought to us? Was there anything that you, that they said that you weren't able to address?
To my knowledge, I don't believe so.
I would add that the main conversation at the planning meeting was around traffic and the additional trips onto Church Street. I think there was some discussion just about conformance with the land use plan and the, the future land use map, but, um, but in terms of things that we could change, that the traffic was the, the biggest kind of issue that was identified.
And could you explain to me again, I'm sure that it's on one of these slides, could you just, I don't think that I fully understand the traffic mitigation measures that you're planning. Is it, it's a left turn lane and there's, but there's no widening of the actual street right?
So our, our plans for the area between sort of our northern and southern boundaries, there are five lots in between. Thank you. The area in blue is our property's frontage and areas that we would need to improve as part of a, a development by right or through this rezoning. And that would include, I believe, some right of way dedication and some, and construction of sidewalks. The area that is shaded in, in red would, would not be required as a by right development because it's property that we're not in control of that, that fronts along Church Street. But the area that is shaded in red on the screen is existing public right of way. So it may not appear as public right of way when you're driving down the street, but it is within the town's discretion and jurisdiction to make improvements within that area. What we are asking or what we are offering as part of this development is to make similar improvements that we would make in the areas shaded in blue, um, as we are, we're planning to make the same improvements in the area shaded in red as the area shaded in blue. Importantly, within that red area is the ability to build out the center turn lane that currently ends about one or two houses north of our southern entrance. So if you look at.
Wait, hold on. One or two houses north of your southern entrance?
Yeah, where that, where that, um, that green arrow is pointing.
Okay.
That's essentially where the center turn lane tapers now. And if we did not make these improvements in the area shaded in red, I don't think that center turn lane could be extended further south so as to essentially create a separate left turn for folks coming south on Church Street to get into this development. The, the, the purpose of extending that center lane is to give vehicles space to make that left turn into the development without impeding other southbound traffic along Church Street that is not looking to get into this development. So essentially what we're trying to do is say, even if people are driving into our development, even if there are more cars turning in here, we're not impacting other residents kind of free flowing of Church Street south.
Well, it depends. How many car lengths is, I'm, I'm really sorry, spatial relations just are not my thing. How many car lengths is the, is the center lane that you're proposing?
Well, well, right now, the, the center turn lane that exists on Mooresville is pretty lengthy. So.
It goes up to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, so this extension would essentially, you know, it guarantees the extension of that center turn lane to our southern access point. And again, ensures that people aren't being blocked from residents or guests turning left into this side.
And also this is part of Phase Two of the airport, um, or the Aviation Airport, the extension, Airport Boulevard. It's the, it's expanding this portion of Church is a part of that, um, all the way down. So it's, it's kind of doing that piece of it as well.
Okay. All right. I appreciate the additional work that you've done on the presentation. Thank you very much.
I don't see any other questions, but if you could please state your name and role for the record, just so we have that for sure.
Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners. I am the land use attorney that's representing Middleburg on this project.
Okay, thank you, sir. So seeing nothing else, we'll reopen, well, we'll continue the public hearing unless the staff have anything wanted to add at this point? Okay, so go back to the public hearing. Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there a, is there a date that needs to be, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were just opening up the public hearing again or closing it?
We are going to listen to the public hearing and then decide as a group, I guess, a couple of things, whether or not we're going to close the public hearing and whether or not we're going to continue this or take a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd recognize Mr. Ward, you're standing?
Yeah, you just said what I was going to clarify, so yeah.
Okay, great. Town clerk, do we have people signed up for the public hearing, please?
Barbara Grissom.
Okay, Barbara Grissom, if you could, just like the public address earlier, if you could state your name and your address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak and we welcome your comments.
Can you guys hear me?
Not quite. Try again.
Hi, my name is Barbara Grissom. I'm at 806 Church Street. I'm not here to protest growth, but to advocate for responsible growth, the kind that balances development with the lived experiences of the current residents. Let me start by acknowledging the positives. The development could bring new energy, support local businesses, and offer people a chance to call this place a home. If designated thoughtfully, it has the potential to be a beautiful addition, addition to the town. But that potential also comes with serious concerns and many of us feel those concerns are overlooked in favor of profit and speed. First and foremost, traffic and safety. Church Street and McCrimmon are already congested corridors. The additional 156 rental homes, potentially 300 or more vehicles, will only increase that strain. It, I took out some time to look into the average daily traffic for Church Street and McCrimmon via NCDOT website, and unfortunately, there was no data on the immediate areas. But I did see that the surrounding roads on Davis and Chapel Hill Boulevard, or Chapel Hill Road, I'm sorry, see about 20 to 34,999 vehicles a day. Second, infrastructure. Our roads, stormwater systems, and public services are already under pressure. I believe it would be better to focus on infrastructure before adding more developments. Third, character and cohesion. This development as proposed does not reflect the low to medium density charm that makes Church Street such a special place to live. We're not against the new neighbors. We just want development that feels like it fits. I also ask that the residents be considered about what happens next in Mooresville. I strongly encourage the town council to go see the developers' current projects in Raleigh, Durham, and Wake Forest, walk the neighborhoods, talk to the residents, and that firsthand understanding is critical before we invite this model into Mooresville. Finally, I want to be clear. If a development is, is the right fit, we'll welcome it. But if it's not, then that's okay too. There's no harm in taking more time to get it right. In fact, there's wisdom in it. We need to be, we need to ensure growth is mutually beneficial, not just for the developers, but for the residents who already call Mooresville a home. Please listen and please leave with care. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next is Pete Martin.
My name is Pete Martin. I lived here in Mooresville for 29 years, so I am considered a Mooresville, a Mooresville resident after living here that long. However, a lot of projects have come before the board, but in particular, this project somewhat touched my heart. I do not support change in the zoning. The developer had a long time where he could have changed it. I don't believe that land use changes should be at the time that the project come because they feel they can make a quick buck, buck and push the density up in the air. This is, that is more than ridiculous. Therefore, I do, will not support this and I hope that the board members also will not support this, this particular thing. Church Street is limited as to widening. Church Street cannot be widened. The 540, 540 covers a section of Church Street. How can you widen that, that Church Street? Don't make any sense. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Maggie Madlin, and I've only been here 71 years. Okay. Can anybody see these papers? These are the few papers that I have saved with all the changes, the rezoning of the land in Mooresville. Anybody that would like to see this, I would be glad to see it. I mean, two years ago, they just rezoned everything, what it would be. And I want you to think about how much money has been wasted on these papers that was never used. These plans was never used and they rezoned, it rezoned, rezoned. And I would like to invite two, four, seven of you to come to my house at 5711 McCrimmon Parkway and park in my driveway, it's paved, you won't get your feet dirty, in my yard and see how long, different times of the day it takes you to get out of your driveway. Very seldom you find anybody that is nice enough to let you out. Occasionally, somebody, a truck driver might blink his lights and let you out. But very seldom you can get out. But I am dead serious. You are welcome to come to my house and sit there. I can tell that to some people it's not interested in all of what I'm saying, that they're reading other things. But I wish that he would pay attention to how some others feel that he's been here a while.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers signed up?
No.
Did we get any email input on this subject?
No online public input was received by the deadline following town council policies and rules of procedure version 15. Any comments received after the deadline will be forwarded electronically to council following the meeting.
Okay, so how many of those were there? Just so we know.
One.
There was one of those. Okay, excellent. Is there anyone else here in the room who would like to speak on this subject, this public hearing item? Sir, if you want to go ahead and sign your name and your residential address and then we'll let you speak. Yeah, they'll have a sheet of paper. If we could just do that first, that'd be great. Thank you. If there's anyone else, if you could please line up by the pillar behind him. So your name and your residential address for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Michael Anderson. I live on 1117 Foxglove Drive, just down the street from, or down Church Street from the developments. So looking around the area, I think this development fits in well with the neighborhood character. Across the street from this development, there, you have a plus or a delta, about 12.5 units per acre. For reference, this is about five units per acre. So across streets, you have two and a half times more density per, per lots of housing. So I think it will fit in well with the neighborhood. In addition, this is, this development is next to the planned transit oriented development on, on McCrimmon and Highway 54, Chapel Hill Road. So I also think that this will be able to fit in well for that because it provides additional housing for the first level amenities that that will include. Now, as the gentleman mentioned, 21 of these units are set aside for affordability. In addition, the other 135 units, it will also be able to contribute to affordable housing by way of creating more housing supply. There have been studies such as Mast a couple of years ago, where he found through moving chains, or I'm sorry, vacancy chains. So a new, new housing opens up, someone moves into that, they, and they creates a vacant housing from where they moved from. You follow that for six times and for every 100 units of new, of new market rate housing, you get about, I believe it's about 30 units of well below medium priced, medium priced housing. In addition, Mooresville badly needs more housing. Even according to our own publications, we've had 5% year-over-year population growth, but only 2% year-over-year housing growth. Then that's a recipe for disaster. Or, I guess it's great if you own, if you own a house, but if you're young, if you're just moving into the area, it just means you're paying more and more each year. And finally, I think this is a good idea for the council to consider, because it provides a good amount of taxable revenue. Right now, the land is essentially undeveloped. I believe there's only one plot that has a structure. But even if it matches the, even if it matches the improvements to land value of the properties across the street, that's still about $80,000 per year that the council could earmark for different programs. You were talking about, last year, the council was discussing a possibility of a low-income housing, either a voucher program or something like that. This is very much kick-started. So, thank you. My request is the council approves it, and if possible, to drop conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we might have one more.
Hey, guys, how's it going? It's been a while. I'm Richard Reiner at 1437 Spring Garden Drive. Once again, Mooresville is ignoring the town council, and we don't want to ignore the fact that Church Street, even with the improvements, probably will not be able to handle this kind of traffic. I mean, I don't know how many times you've been on Church Street, and you're trying to make a turn, and it's like basically impossible, because the lanes are, you know, even with the current traffic, the lanes cannot handle it. I know when I used to deliver mail out there, I would always want to get out of there and in there before 3 o'clock, because anything after 3 o'clock during the work week, you're just not gonna be able, you know, get out of there. So anyhow, I do support responsible development, but we also have to consider the people that are long-term residents here, especially on the Church Street area. I mean, the young lady over here at the 5711, McCrimmon's a prime example of what happens when you don't responsibly develop, and the roads cannot handle the traffic. She can't get out. So, I mean, how long have we been waiting for the McCrimmon extension? You know, there'd be two lanes each way, I mean, we're still waiting for it. And I'm sure there's available money at the state of the federal level, but we don't see that being used, or being, you know, being able to be, you know, put into use with appropriate grants or writings. Anyhow, I do not support the development as the way it is right now. Church cannot handle it, the lights cannot handle it, it's bad enough as it is. And that's really all I got to say. Thank you.
I don't see anyone else standing at this time. Does council have any questions of staff or the applicant before we determine whether or not we're gonna leave the public hearing open or closed? Councilmember Johnson.
So I just wanted to say thank you, Elliot, for the conditions comparison chart. That was, I'm sorry, I can hear myself, so I must be very loud. I talk loud as it is, so I'm trying to whisper. Thank you for the comparison chart. That was very helpful to me to understand what they could do by rights, and what they are asking for with the additional 21 units. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, that was helpful.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Garamello, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I think I want to thank the applicant, you know, for choosing Mooresville, and because there's something I did not even know, the history of Iron Mountain, being 25 years here, but, you know, at that time, doing it, it's a refresher, and I don't think anyone in the council or the staff had that knowledge, but thank you. And also to the lady who basically said, you know, from last 70 years, I don't know, like 30, 40 years, I would like, I think I'm going to take it upon, you know, go and look at those documents, they're going to be pretty fascinating. But as a no vote is needed today, you know, I think listening to the residents is important, and at the same time, I'm, you know, trying to see from a person who has invested in Mooresville for such a long time, you know, what can be a win-win for all. But I think I personally feel that traffic is a concern, and we have issues ourselves with McCrimmon flyover, you know, getting delayed, and other areas, and also like, end of Church Street is a right in, right out, too. So the outlets of Church Street is also restricted to how you can go. So, again, I think, want to thank both of them to come and put your word here, and letting us know. Thank you.
So if I, here, Mayor Protem correctly, you're advocating to not vote tonight, I guess we should start there with that, because we're not gonna...
Yeah, I think that...
...leave it public, open like that, okay?
Usually, we listen to the applicant who do not like to vote, or basically hold on that. So that is customary, you know?
Yeah, generally, we've extended that courtesy, although we had a recent applicant, and that took a really long time. So we're hoping that if we do that choice this time, it won't be as extended. Would anyone else like to chime in on whether or not we're gonna... Oh, did I hear something over here? Okay, sorry. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I would like to thank the residents who came up and spoke today. I know myself, before I was on council, and the first time I spoke, public comments, it's scary, so I appreciate you guys speaking. And I just wanted to note that, because I think one of the gentlemen spoke about the traffic, it's not just this one development increasing the traffic, it's all the other little developments. It's Myers Point, it's the next development up, I think it's called Hampton Place, that was just, these last two town home developments were just put in in the last few years, and then now this one. It's each little incremental development added on, and there's absolutely no plan for Church Street to be widened. And in addition, on the other side of McCrimmon, we have Church Street Park, which has added traffic when that is in use. And we know, as it was alluded to by the Mayor Protem, the McCrimmon widening project keeps getting pushed back and pushed back, as well as the aviation widening project has now been pushed back to fiscal year '30. So, those projects, we have no control over, and all of those keep getting pushed back, and yet we keep building. So I certainly don't want to vote on this project today. If I voted, it would definitely be no. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
I'd say as a courtesy of the applicant, I think we need to wait another meeting or voting. Would anyone else chime in? Because right now, we only have three saying that.
So, yes, I think typically, we close a public hearing, and then we don't vote on that item, we take it up at the next meeting, and I think that is appropriate. I did, I did want to say, I did hear the applicant talk about deferring or withdrawing the, or something to that effect, so maybe between now and then, we can clarify that position, too.
Okay. So, we would want to leave the public hearing open or close it at this time? Councilmember Body.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Body, a second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone like to keep it open? Hearing none, that carries the NDC 70, the public hearing is now closed. This time, we would entertain a motion to adopt or deny, but it sounds like we have council consensus to table this till indefinitely, or what would the county attorney suggest the wording be on what we do next?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
What I said before, I'm gonna repeat, typically what we do is we close a public hearing, and the item is on our next agenda for action. I would, I would say that's the method. That's our usual protocol, and I would stick to that.
Okay, well, we have to tie the vote, so I was just gonna ask the county attorney.
That would be the motion, and the council would need to vote on that.
Okay, so we can't just say we're waiting till the next meeting, we need to motion?
Correct.
Okay, and that's a motion to table, defer?
It is, correct, it's a motion to defer to the next meeting.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scrivin Johnson.
So I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think procedurally, I have to weigh in on this. I really do appreciate the public coming forward during the public hearing portion. We do a lot of public hearing for rezonings, and also for larger projects, and we don't get as many speakers as we did tonight. So that is good to have engaged public, and I appreciate that feedback, especially the McCrimmon driveway. I drive by McCrimmon, and I see, I see it, it's very helpful. But I do not recall, as a practice, that we vote when we have public speakers in a public hearing, unless there's some significant need. And I do not hear from the applicant that they had expected a vote tonight. I also feel like, out of respect to our public, we need to not vote tonight. There is some consideration with what we've heard, and I do not appreciate the mayor trying to rush the vote. And it feels to me like you're trying to rush the vote, despite the fact that you've had at least three council members say that they are not procedurally wanting to vote, and it's even printed on the agenda as such. So I would appreciate not voting tonight, and if someone makes a motion, I will say no. Well, I...
I was the third person to say that we shouldn't vote tonight, so...
Right, right.
Thank you for your perspective.
I don't even think that was a question.
I don't think he's proposing we vote tonight.
Well, he asked.
He just said that.
I was trying to facilitate the council's wish, and I was trying to ask everyone to weigh in, because that's my job.
I think we should just move on. Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to defer this until the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Fender, to defer this to the next meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing nothing, that's 7-0 unanimous, to defer to the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ward, thank you to the applicant, and to all the residents for weighing in tonight. Okay, we're moving on to item 12. There is one action item on this evening's agenda. We invite Brittany Johnson, Planning Manager, forward to update town council on the proposed UDO text amendments for Business Activity Center and Industrial Management Zoning Districts. Public hearing was held and closed at the April 8th town council meeting. Council is scheduled to take action this evening. And we'll give everyone a moment to clear the room. Okay, Ms. Johnson? Thank you.
Brittany Johnson, Planning Manager, good evening, Mayor and council. It is my pleasure to bring before you again proposed UDO text amendments related to the Business Activity Center Industrial Management Zoning Districts. The public hearing for this item was closed on April 8th. In response to public hearing comments, council had questions concerning the requirement of a parapet wall and roof well to screen roof-mounted equipment. The proposed language has been updated to provide further alternatives regarding screening options for roof-mounted equipment. The proposed language has also been updated to request written certification by the appropriate agency certifying compliance with the regulatory requirements concerning hazardous materials. I will review this information with our next upcoming slides. As previously presented, we are proposing to add light manufacturing as a permitted use in the BAC zoning district. With this change, we are also proposing use-specific standards. Previously, number five of the use-specific standards in the proposed text specified that roof well or parapet wall would be required to screen all roof-mounted equipment, to not be visible from the immediate ground and the ground level of adjacent properties. The proposed language has been updated to also allow for screen walls to be current, which are currently allowed per UDO Section 5.13.1(c)(2). With that code language, just to specify what that, what that means, so this section would allow for screen walls to be utilized as well, and these would have to be equal or exceed the height of the mechanical equipment being screened. The equipment must also be, or the screening must also be incorporated with the materials, colors, and design, so that it's visually consistent with the building's architecture. So you can see in the diagram, so a parapet wall would be an extension of the facade wall, and so a screen wall would certainly just be in addition to the top of the roof there. I do have a few examples here on this slide. The first example shows that you can do them around the perimeter of the building, or they can be implemented around, specified, just on the perimeter of the equipment to be screened. So these are just a few examples. Lastly, number seven was added, so it just reads FD necessary by the planning director. Applications for a building permit shall include written certification by the appropriate agency clarifying compliance with all regulatory requirements concerning hazardous materials. This section was simply added to ensure that all hazardous material is handled in accordance with any sort of regulatory requirements. This concludes all of my updates. Just as a reminder, staff does recommend approval for the proposed text amendments. This change will expand the scope of our life science support, enhance our competitiveness in target industries, position us to capture emerging industry opportunities, support a holistic economic development strategy, and ensure infrastructure alignment. Also, as a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval of the proposed text amendments by a vote of 5 to 0. Here is your ordinance language for tonight. Again, the public hearing was closed on this item on April 8th, and action is scheduled for tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion, then. I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson, please.
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that I find the proposed text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to the business...
Sorry, I'll start over. I'd like to make a motion that I find, that one, I find the proposed text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to the Business Activity Center (BAC) and Industrial Management (IM) zoning districts to be consistent with the town of Mooresville's comprehension, comprehensive plan, and in the public interest for the following reasons: The proposed amendment will a) expand the scope of our life sciences support, b) enhance our competitiveness in targeted industries, c) position us to capture emerging industry opportunities, d) support a holistic economic development strategy, e) ensure infrastructure alignment, and I hereby make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-85-0 of the Mooresville Town Council approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to the Business Activity Center (BAC) and Industrial Management (IM) zoning districts.
I second the motion.
Very much, Councilmember Johnson, and a second for Councilmember Body, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the business committee who weighed in to make this a meeting. So, just to summarize, that was... So, just to summarize, that was a unanimous vote, 7-0 to approve, and I'm sorry I had my mic off. We are now at item 13, future meetings, events, and resident involvement opportunities. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. Moving on to council comments, Councilmember Johnson will share first and be followed by myself.
I have no comments, except the mics are incredibly sensitive to me. I can hear every movement and every, every wrinkle and everything everybody is saying in the room.
I have good news. It's your last night with these mics.
Okay.
The new AV system will be installed starting Mon-, well, I'm sorry, you'll have to use them Thursday. I apologize. Starting next Monday, the new system's being installed.
Okay, thank you. I have no comments.
They are sensitive. I'll go now, followed by Councilmember Robi. I'd like to start by thanking everyone for their thoughts and empathy towards my family and myself, as we continue to grieve the passing of my father last week. Your compassion has been very helpful to all of us. My dad, Tom, enjoyed his 86 years, and I will miss spending time with him and have very fond recent memories of him at the senior center playing bingo and St. Patrick's Day lunches and lunches with our friends at the Rotary meetings. He never met a stranger, and I, and he loved to connect with people. In that vein, I want to thank IT Serv Alliance, our police department, our Parks and Rec staff, Nepal Center, North Carolina, and Children's Festival organizers, and the board at Simon Deere for creating opportunities for so many people to connect and strengthen the relationships which make Morrisville and our entire region a great place to live, love, learn, work, pray, and play. And now, Councilmember Robi, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. My condolences on the death of your father. I liked him very much. I also had the pleasure of attending Nepal Day over the weekend, which was, as usual, amazing. And I'd like to thank the, all of the organizers for the invitation and for the warm welcome. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson.
I do, I do want to echo my condolences to the Colley family. I got to know your father well over the years, Mayor. I'm very, very sorry. And I'm glad you got to spend great time with him towards the end. Mine, I did want everything on the events, and I, I'm sorry I was late today. I couldn't find a parking spot on this meeting proclamation, but I wanted a chance to just make my comments about small business. You know, I, I really want to thank our small business community in Morrisville and the Triangle. They're really an engine of economic growth. Just a few weeks ago, I heard Secretary of State Lynn Marshall say in a report that was released that if you increase the performance of small businesses by 5%, you can create 24,000 new jobs. So it's really amazing, and Raleigh Durham Startup Summit I attended with, last week, was just amazing to see the amount of startups and entrepreneurs. So I'm really looking forward to this being a part of our economic development strategy. With that being said, on, next week, on April 29th in the evening, I'll be hosting, I'll be coming back from the League of Municipalities, but I'll be hosting Secretary of State Lynn Marshall in the Apex Town Hall at 5:30 PM. So if you're interested in a small business, you want to meet the secretary, talk about your business, she's going to be here, but I just wanted to say that. I was going to say it before I read the proclamation. Sorry, I was late today, and that's all my comments for this evening.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretam Garamilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any comments this evening.
Okay. Mayor Pretam Garamilla, please.
Now, again, my condolences to the Colley family, and I still remember the day, you know, he used to sit there, and one time.
Yeah, thank you.
He was snoring, and I could see the reaction on your face. You were like, Dad, stop.
That's my dad.
So, but, you know, I think we had all good memories.
Yep.
And the, one comment for the staff is, we had two successful Easter and Nepal Day, but the traffic was just a lot. You know, I think especially the Nepal Day, the backup was all the way till Town Hall, and even for the Easter, it was backed up all the way. So I don't know how and what, but these events won't stop, and we need to find a better solution. It's just my two cents. I don't know that I have the answer. I don't know if you guys have the answer, but it is causing a lot of backups.
Understood. Thank you.
And now, it's back to you, Town Manager Udoma, for any comments.
I have two quick ones, Mayor, actually three, and then Aaron is going to comment real quickly on something. One, would also like to offer staff's condolences to you and your family. I thought your dad was a very, very nice man. Got to speak to him off and on, so very sorry about that.
Thank you, sir.
Secondly, just a reminder, I think I alluded to it earlier, we have a work session Thursday. That's a reminder for you, but also for the community. That'll be another budget work session where we'll be talking about potential investment in the community and what that may look like, prior to the budget then being recommended on May 13th. So we encourage everyone to consider attending that meeting or watching online. And then third, just to let you know, in case you see the work at the Pew House, there is an elm tree, and if you're looking at the Pew House from Morrisville Carpenter, it would be on the left front side. That has been decaying for several years, and is now to the point where our staff and our tree consultant is concerned it could fall, and if it falls, it could fall on the house. So we're going to take that down as a precaution. Just wanted to let you know, in case you saw the work there, that's what's happening with that tree. There, there's no saving it. It's, it's gone, so we're going to get it down before it does any damage. And with that, I'll pass it to Aaron Hudson, Strategic Performance Manager.
Thank you, Town Manager. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Early this morning, you all received an email from me, and it contained an attachment, which was a draft letter of support that staff is proposing to send to Congresswoman Valerie Foushee. As Town Manager Udoma has previously shared with you, the community project funding submission that the town provided to Congresswoman Ross last year for the Town Center project was supported by Congresswoman Ross but did not move forward with the continuing resolution for congressional operation this year. So that funding opportunity was not able to continue for the town. Also, with redistricting, the Town Center is now in NC District Four, which is represented by Congresswoman Foushee, and we have continued to work, and staff has met and discussed as a team, and we feel that the Town Center is still our best project to put forward with the, the varying committee criteria that are out there. So we have pulled together updated information. We have spoken with a couple of different members of Congresswoman Foushee's staff, prepared the draft letter that you all received electronically. There's also a hard copy at your seats. Happy to answer any questions. If you have any recommendations on additional information you'd like to include, we're happy to hear that. The deadline for submittal is tomorrow, so we are under a little bit of a crunch, but staff is eager to submit this project and keep our fingers crossed for it moving forward and, and being supported for congressional funding.
Okay, so can we just, does anyone have any input? Any comments? Can we just go ahead and get some head nods, then? We'll go ahead and submit that tomorrow? Or as soon as possible?
Yep. We, we have to do our complete submittal tomorrow for Congresswoman Foushee, which is our application, and then all of our community letters of support, which we're wrapping those up this evening and tomorrow as well.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for shepherding this. Appreciate it. The whole team.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Johnson?
No, not about this. I want to bring up one other thing. Are we done?
Um, I believe we're done with that one.
Could I mention real quick, I, I don't know that Aaron mentioned it, so we've also been in communication with Congresswoman Ross's office, and they've indicated that they would like to try to support this for us as well. Again, the, the line moved like three blocks between last year and this year, so last year it was a, is a project in Congresswoman Ross's office and District, excuse me, and now it's in Congresswoman Foushee's. But Congresswoman Ross recognizes what's happened, have talked with her staff a couple of times, and so I think we have some support from there as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
So I just, I thought of one other thing, and I don't know who to address this to, but the lead conference is next week. Can we, I, I've not seen anything about registration. I mean, I know I asked to register, but I've not seen any confirmation, so if you all could just send us whatever you need to send us for the lead conference next week.
Absolutely.
And I'm not alone. I know there are several of those going, so, thank you.
Okay. Excellent. If there's nothing else from staff, we are scheduled for a 15-minute break at this time, and we're going to reconvene at the work session table. Please bring your microphones and your blue slates so we can facilitate the conversations. Let's please regather down there at 7:36. Thank you very much.
Council, while you're on your break, please don't forget to check your mailboxes. They're starting to get a little full. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two, a couple of work sessions. The first one is sponsorship agreement with the Superlative Group, Inc. John Letney, our assistant town manager, will talk right after Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief introduction. I'm largely here for moral support, but just want to give you and I think the community a quick, you know, sort of refresher. So we have had conversations about sponsorship and the opportunities that could bring to the town for potential revenues to support, probably primarily parks, but certainly other things that we work on and invest in. And so in the fall, Will Glenn, our former communications director, had largely taken the lead on this. So we had put an RFP out. We got two responses to that RFP. John's going to talk through that process. So tonight, we're going to highlight sort of where we are and share with you the agreement that I intend to sign tomorrow with this group. But again, because this is, I know, important to you and certainly relevant to our community, we wanted to give you sort of a transparency to share that with you before I sign the agreement and get us moving forward in terms of looking for sponsorship dollars, including the dog park, Church Street Park, and other town-owned amenities. So with that, I'm going to turn it to John.
Thank you, Town Manager. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you a little bit of history, tell you where we've been on this sponsorship and naming rights topic area and our policies, tell you a little bit about the process of how we got to where we are, and then a little bit about the contract that the manager has already mentioned. So to refresh your recollection, so this was council item 118 in 2024. So back in March of '24, you heard a presentation by Will Glenn, our former director of communications and outreach, on the sponsorship policy and the naming rights policy. So those two policies have been drafted over a period of time with your ideas and your input, put together into policies, and they were presented to you then at your direction. We then presented those to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee for their knowledge, information, and their input. We made some minor revisions to that, brought it back to you on May 14, 2024, in which you approved those policies. So since that time, there's been a lot going on behind the scenes to operationalize those policies and breathe some life into what will that look like? How do we really get some really decent naming rights and sponsorships by virtue of those policies? So most of June through September, there was a fair amount of research in determining the factors for an RFP. What we realized is this is a very specialized area where you need an expertise to value property, to understand the market around assigning naming rights, to recruit engaging contracts and identify either people or corporations or entities that would be interested in sponsoring or putting their name on an amenity. And what does that look like? Is that a baseball field? Is it a scoreboard? Is it an entire park? Is it a part of it? We're really trying to figure out what that looked like. So Will and his team did a fair amount of research on that, crafted a very good RFP. That went out in October. It was due back in December, but we had to extend it a little bit. As I said, specialized market, not a lot of companies out there do this kind of work. So initially, we did not get what we considered to be a good enough response for us to really vet and evaluate, left it out a little bit longer, did a little more advertising and so on, and then it closed in the end of December. We had two companies respond to the RFP. In January, we did the proposal review, and then February, March, after some interviews, I'll get to that in a minute, did some contract negotiations, and then just recently settled on a contract that the town is pleased with, as is the contractor. So again, going back to last year, we talked about the proposed sponsorship policy. This slide is actually from that presentation. So the proposed policy that you now have adopted establishes the process that set the standards, the guidelines, and the approval criteria for the consideration and acceptance of a sponsorship for activities, events, and programs. And then the facility naming rights policy is that established parameters for soliciting and entering into facility naming rights agreements to provide financial support to the town in exchange for a name being assigned to a town-owned building, facility, or amenity. So these are two related and similar topics and concepts, but they are somewhat different in that we can do sponsorships, as we have, for events like Boobash. We'll get a local business that would do, you know, a nominal sponsorship. We still will do that. We still will continue that type of process. What we are looking at through this are the larger corporate sponsors, other organizational-type sponsors, and facility naming rights sponsors in that way. So the proposal review, what we looked at there was the company background, the references that not only they provided, but that we could generate from the references they provided. So we were able to find a couple others that they didn't provide to us that they had also worked with. So that was good information I have as well. We looked at their project approach. How are they going to engage with town staff, engage with our business community and those in the area to make this successful? How they were going to do that, their methods, their technology, their staff, their expertise, very important to us in not only being respectful to the amenities that we have, but also to our business community, and understanding that this is a partnership and it's a relationship that we want to enhance. It's not just about the dollars per se. The implementation schedule and having a defined process for that was important, and I'll show you that in a little bit. Having some cost options was something we evaluated as well, because there's different ways to engage in these agreements and how it gets funded to the business, and then what that does for us on the back end. I mentioned interviews. So we conducted interviews with the principals of the two organizations that respond to the RFP. That was the town manager, the director of communications and outreach, the director of parks and recreation, cultural resources, and then myself. And in those interviews, we looked at these areas. So their strategic approach, again, their relationship management, understanding we want this long-term partnership with a potential sponsor. What's their creative expertise? The creativity around how you message, how they would market and so on, is important, and frankly, not an expertise that we have in the town. Their logistics and management, how they go about their business, and then, of course, we want to know the outcomes and their results. Are they a company that has proven results, or, you know, are they with their first client, and so on. So after that vetting, we ended up with the Superlative Group as rising to the top for a variety of reasons. So this is their focus statement. So they focus on maximizing revenue generation for our clients while over-delivering on value, similar to what we would want to do. We want to, you know, maximize the opportunities for our community, and we want the value of what the town provides to be over-delivered, to exceed expectations. And so if we're going to engage in a partner, we want them to share that kind of vision that we do as well. So Superlative is a $3.5 billion company. They're based in Ohio, 30 years in this business, actually one of the original companies that got into this business in the first place. And they've got over 1,000 completed projects, so really good market share and quite an extensive history in doing naming rights. So customer feedback, I mentioned references. So these are just some of the quotes we got back from some of their, either current or past customers. Very experienced and polished, rapidly successful. We got a lot of stuff done quickly. It's important. We got a dog park that's about to open, hopefully soon. We need to get some stuff done quickly. They were flexible and stayed true to the direction we provided. Again, that's important because we, as the town of Morrisville, are providing this direction to them to enhance our operations. We don't want to plug and play. We don't want a canned approach. We want something that's flexible. And the final, they brought value to the process with them not being from the community. They brought a fresh perspective. So I mentioned this company is in Ohio. There is not a local company that does this level of work. However, this company does work in the Triangle area, and I'll show you a slide with some of their current or past clients. So we asked the question, and did they help you secure any sponsorships or naming rights? So that's kind of the bottom line here. Several of the references said, so one was a naming rights agreement that they secured a $14 million over 20-year period of time. Another was a naming rights agreement of $2.1 million over 10-year period of time. Another $4 million over 20 years, and another one, $22.5 million over 30 years. So there's a lot that goes into that, in different amounts, different timeframes, and that gets to valuation. So local clients' related experience. So you see here, they've done work in Raleigh for the Raleigh Convention and Performing Arts Complex. They've done work in Durham for DPAC. They've done work in Chapel Hill for Chapel Hill Transit. So they've got the triangle covered in different market areas and not just all one arena. They have several sports complexes that they have done. I only put one in because this is a great graphic of a very large facility in Irvine, California, and they secured a fair amount of naming rights sponsorships for that. And then they're working very closely with the Indiana Township Parks Department and working specifically on parks and naming some things as simple as what we are going to call the porch. So related experience in the region and also in what we are trying to accomplish here. So the professional services agreement, which was in the packet that you received, just a couple highlights. I'm not going to go through all of these in detail, but it does call for them to do an onsite asset valuation. And that's really important, that they come here, they look at not only our infrastructure for the town, but they actually go and visit those things we want them to help us with naming. They look at the facilities. They go to Church Street Park. They go to MAFC. They go to all of our parks, actually, and look at what do we have and where, in their expert opinion, does this fit in a value to the marketplace? expert opinion, does this fit in a value to the marketplace that they know very well because they've been they've been working with it? They do that quantitative and qualitative analysis. They will look at at contract and policy analysis, so they will help us develop a contract with an organization that may want to put their name on the dog park, for example. They will work out all the details of the the terms. So is this one year, is it five years, is it ten years? What's that? What's that length of time? What is it valued at? And how do we negotiate what they're willing to provide? And then what do they get for that? Do they get their name on the dog park? Is it the X Corporation Dog Park? Or is it the Morrisville Dog Park sponsored by X Corporation? Those are different values for for those kind of things. They'll help us figure all that out. Sales campaign development, prospecting, that's all in their wheelhouse of finding some of these 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 corporations. And if we find them, and I'll get to in a second, that there's a little different commission for that. So managing the the audit and the ongoing rights, they help us manage these contracts and make sure that we're getting paid, because if we're not getting paid, they're not getting paid. So they have some skin in the game in that as well. And then they give us these progress reports on a regular basis of what they've done, what's worked, what hasn't worked, and so on. And then the other nice thing we liked about this is this is this in phase two and three, it's in essence, a twelve-month contract. We can extend it. We can renew it. We can do more work with them, but we have a year period of time, or they have a year period of time, to show us what it is that they can provide. So implementation, this is phase one. So once we agree to work with them, the clock starts ticking. This is about a three- to four-month period of time where they will do this onsite valuation, and you see all the other other steps that they will do and their and their kind of timeline of how that will how that will play out. Again, they've got a thousand, over a thousand clients. They've they've honed this process to be something that appears to be very efficient and has been very effective for others. We hope it would be very effective for the town of Morrisville. Phases two and three really are the sales part. That's the twelve-month that begins generally after phase one. There's a little bit of overlap. They'll start working on some of these things once they get some valuation, but generally it's it's going to run consecutively. So developing the materials, the pipeline development, that's the pipeline of potential corporations, organizations, and so on, that would be interested in in perhaps engaging in this kind of agreement with us. So the outreach, the follow-up, the sales, the the site visits, all those kind of things, they would continue on. They had a really, we thought, robust market and demographic data already prepared because they've done work in the Triangle. They they know a lot of the major corporations. They already have relationships and partnerships and agreements with them. Once they know what Morrisville has online, they've already built these these conduits of communication that may help get some of those organizations that may be sponsoring something elsewhere in the Triangle that would also want to sponsor something here in Morrisville. So the media value, the value justification, we've talked a little bit about. They're they're the experts in in determining the value, not only to the town, but also to that potential sponsor. They'll do things like traffic counts, views, people who would casually drive by versus people who would attend, and there's a there's a value to that in in their their marketing world.
John, if I could, I think, you know, one of the things that really impressed us is, you know, we we interviewed the first company, and there were two people there, the owner and and the gentleman that was going to do the work. And so when we met with Superlative, I think there were six people on the call. There was one of the owners, there was a project manager, there was a person that handles finances, the person that handles contracts, the person that handles valuation. I mean, this is what they do, and they bring a team together to work on this. So they're they were very impressive in in what they shared with us.
And in in some of the municipalities we talked to early on in our research that have done this work themselves, they recognized a couple things. Number one, they don't have the expertise to do it. As a result, they either overvalued or undervalued, generally undervalued, what the assets they had were, didn't really have the team approach because they don't have the team of experts. All those things that we know we are not the experts at, they are, and they bring those people to to bear for for us as their client. So the cost, there is, again, there's a few options and costs. This is the one that we feel is the most value-add and and responsible to to the town and certainly to our taxpayers. So there there's there's three main parts of the cost. So there's a project fee. This is a forty thousand dollar one-time upfront fee that will be paid in fiscal year twenty-five, our current fiscal year, and that's to get things rolling, that's to get their team together, to get to get them here, to do the work, to get it ready and the valuation and so on and so forth. Then, once the phase two and three starts, so that twelve-month contract, there's a retainer of five thousand dollars per month for the work they would do on our behalf. So sixty thousand dollars for that one-year contract. So let me let me skip down to to the fifty percent. So on top of the five thousand dollars per month, they will earn a commission of fifteen percent on the sponsorships that they directly sell. So for simple math, and you have the chart here, if it's a million dollars, they earn a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So and we end up with the remainder of the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town. So the break even, when when you work out the math, the break even for us is about seventy-one thousand dollars. So if they get us one seventy-one thousand dollar sponsor or a variety of sponsors that equal or exceed seventy-one thousand dollars, then we break even on the annual retainer and the fifteen percent commission. So in the first year, with that, the annual retainer and the fifteen percent commission, sixty thousand dollars, if they get us seventy seventy-five thousand dollars, we're with their commission of eleven two fifty, eleven thousand, eleven or seven thousand, roughly is that a break-even number. Does that make sense? Or am I? Do you want to explain it any further? Okay.
You're not factoring in the forty thousand.
Correct. This is the...
I would factor it with seven thousand.
Okay, so then it would be forty thousand plus that. Right. So what we were looking at was the annual cost, and if we continue on, what would this cost us annually to keep it going? But you're absolutely right, there's a fee upfront. So that then they would they would need to get us another fifty thousand, give or take, on top of that. So maybe we're at a hundred and twenty thousand. And and while that's a lot of money, what we're looking at, they're bringing in for similarly sized towns and cities with some amenities that are probably worth more, but some that are worth less, it's in the millions. So we're we're expending the hundred and twenty thousand, give or take, to break even, to your point, but we are looking forward to them bringing in significantly more than that to to the town in these in these fees. Anything else to add on that?
No. We, again, we we looked at different options, and there was, of course, different options with the other company, but this is the option that, after we did the math and and did some work on this, that really offers us the best opportunity to maximize revenue over the course of the agreement.
I think it's important that we consider sponsorship. We all worked on a policy together. We all agreed that sponsorships would benefit our cricket program for obvious reasons. Cricket is a sport that has regular sponsors. We even talked about the dog park, and wouldn't it be nice if we had sponsors for the dog The year one cost that's being presented tonight is no less than a hundred thousand dollars, and it's more if we get a contract. I had envisioned that we would be open to small business as well as large business, and I think that this service is higher price point than our small business community could afford. I I think we are, with this contract, pushed to seek higher sponsorships than maybe we should do on year one. Also, the economy is much different today than it was in fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. Businesses are rethinking a lot of sponsorship activities as well as their own commercial footprint with office space and and rents and so forth like that. I am concerned that we are obligating ourselves to a hundred thousand plus with not with a lot of uncertainty to the program. I would rather see us grow small, start with a cricket park. Unfortunately, this year, we do not have USA Cricket coming in, so that does diminish the potential value for this year, for this season, and we are not necessarily going to be as successful with recruiting high amounts of sponsors. So I like looking at this more from a homegrown approach, understanding our markets, celebrating our small businesses, looking at our larger constituents as well. We are not Raleigh. We are not, we do not have a convention center. We do not have the Durham Performing Arts. We have a cricket field that is not supporting a national cricket season or any international games this season, so we are not where we had hoped to be for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. I I don't see how we can justify this price and the way that it's calculated at this time. I I think you've done a wonderful job of researching, vetting, understanding the market. I don't disagree, this is a specialized thing. I just, I'm a little bit apprehensive, maybe more than a little, about the price point for this and the fact that we would be possibly pricing out our small business community.
Well, thank you for that, and that that is a a very important consideration. And as I I mentioned a little bit earlier about our local sponsors for things like Boobash and Fourth of July and so on, we'll continue to do that. That's where we see our small businesses having having an opportunity. And and you're right, it won't be to this level because we're not going to ask them for this kind of level. We'll still do that through our parks folks, and and we we don't want to include that in this kind of agreement because we don't want that subject to their commission and things along those lines. We those we feel we can handle separately through our own staff and work with our small businesses. So we we understand and and respect your concern on that, and we've had those conversations as well. And you're right, this is a much bigger picture than that. It's so it's almost a little separate.
And that is spelled out in the contract, so we've reserved the right to ensure that we can still deal with people that we find, and then that smaller level. Honestly, they're not interested in that level of, because that doesn't generate the revenue for them. So we still have the ability to work with our small businesses, to give them opportunities at town special events, and, you know, as as the town center opens, certainly opportunities for them to do things there potentially. So it doesn't exclude that at all. That will continue and I think could grow, depending, of course, on market and and what the small businesses want to invest. I I think I agree with you that there is, you know, some apprehension. We've talked about that a lot through the budget and the economy. So I think this is also somewhat of a calculated risk, that there is still value out there to be invested in, you know, particularly the dog park and Church Street Park. We certainly have and will add other amenities over time that we think there is interest in. And again, that's where bringing them in to do that phase-one evaluation will let us better understand what is the value of things that we think we know about, but also what do we have that we don't really think has that much value, but there might be groups out there that are interested in sponsoring, you know, smaller things than necessarily the dog park or the Church Street Park.
And we would refer to those as the bottom bullet on the slide, the town-managed agreements, and there is no commission because we're not putting them through this kind of system. I didn't see who was next.
Thank you. Donna's next.
So when you talk about them coming and evaluating our assets, they're going to look all over town, and they're going to they're going to determine whether we have parks that could be sponsored, whether we have sections of Greenway that could be sponsored, whether, you know, so, I mean, I think that it's a mistake to just look at it in terms of, we have the dog park and we have the cricket field, because anything can be sponsored.
Yes.
And anything can be sponsored at any level. So I I mean, I personally would feel better if they came in and evaluated the assets and just made sure that in the current climate, they felt that they could do what, by my calculations, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in sponsorships to break even, right? Because as soon as they make a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in sponsorships, we're done, then everything else is gravy. So I do really think it's important, and I'm sure you asked them this, what did they say in the interviews about the current climate and the pending recession? And I mean, did they didn't see that affecting their business at all? Or how are they recession-proofing their business?
They didn't address that specifically, but they didn't seem to think it was much of a concern because they're they're continuing to get high-level sponsors right here in the Triangle. And so, yes, that's a concern. We we don't know where the economy is going to go. Some of the larger corporations have a little more capacity that that they can withstand some of that. There there really wasn't anything that I recall around their concern of a recession or anything that would affect their ability to deliver on the proposal that they sent us.
And if I could, I think, you know, one of the things, one of the reasons we like them is thirty years of experience. So they've been through recessions. They've got a plan for recognizing what that looks like. We felt throughout that they were very upfront with us and recognized what our concerns would be. You know, in terms of some of the corporations, I think what you may find is that they don't necessarily stop doing sponsorship, they might reduce their sponsorship. So if it might have been a two, and I'm completely making up numbers, have not had any of these conversations, but let's say the dog park was a two hundred thousand dollar sponsorship a year ago, well, it might be a hundred thousand dollar sponsorship this year, and then, you know, we we reevaluate that over time. I think you you raise a fair point, but I'm confident in what our conversation with them has been, that there are still opportunities out there.
Okay, and I guess they know how to find them. My last question is concerning the type of company that they're going to pursue. I don't want a dog park sponsored sponsored by Marlboro or something, you know? So, I mean, what has your conversation around that been with them?
So we had that conversation with them because we we share that concern. We want to make sure that our amenities are properly named. It's something that we would be either supportive of or even proud of. So we have the first right of refusal, basically. They they will give us a list of who they're going to to speak to, and if there's a organization on that list that we don't think is fitting with with the town, then we can ask them not to pursue that.
Marlboro.
And I think, related to that, there's also languages in this agreement that if we identify the sponsor and bring it to them to help us with, that commission reduces by half.
Yes.
So it goes from fifteen to seven and a half percent if we bring it. They'll do all the work after that to contract and figure out language and do all that, but it would cut that commission in half if we bring them someone. So, you know, if that's a case where any of you or our staff has that contact, and once we have some better guidelines of what we're trying to do, if we identify them, then that automatically gets cut in half because we would bring that sponsor to them.
We've already had some outreach from some local entities that are interested. Now that they know we have a sponsorship program, they're they've reached out to us, and and the chamber has been actually helpful in sending some people as well. So they're in in that in that case, either if it's a a small business that we would manage it, then, again, it wouldn't go through this contract, but if we did want Superlative to to handle all the the business side of it for us, then it would be the seven point five percent commission rather than the four fifty.
And in that case, they would need a hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars for us to break even with contracts where we supply the contacts. Okay, thank you.
Very quick math. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question. I was on their website looking at their clients and markets, and they show the town I carry on here as one of their clients. So have you reached out? So have you reached out to them and asked them, like, how they have used this company and what sponsorships they've had?
Yeah, we, they were, no, no, we have not. I did not have that on our list.
Yeah, interestingly, they didn't share that.
Yeah.
The conversation they shared, the Raleigh and the Durham. And we didn't totally circle.
Yeah, I would think that they would be fairly, I mean, granted, they're a much larger town than we are, but it'd be fairly comparable. I would be interested in knowing how, what Cary's experience has been and how they have used them. I mean, how in the, so my second question is, how in the contract are you going to be able to differentiate between the 7.5 commission and the 0% commission? How are you going to be able to say, oh, no, this one is a town-managed agreement and the 7.5 town developed?
So that gets down to who we refer to them to handle the business side of things. So if we get interest in a sponsor that we think we can manage in-house, and generally that's going to be the ones that we've dealt with in events and things like that, then we just handle that, and that's completely outside this agreement.
Okay.
If we get the sponsor and we think it's, you know, it's a fairly substantial sponsor and we want them to handle it for us, or kind of contract those kind of things, then that's when the 7.5% commission would apply.
All right, yep.
Councilmember Johnson.
So you, John, before mentioned some successes that this company has had.
Yes.
$1 million. What were?
So those came from references and...
Yeah, but what were the ball fields? Were they, what were they, were they stadiums? Were there convention centers? I mean, it sounds fabulous to talk about $1 million contract, but we don't have, I don't know, we don't have convention center, we don't have major league, minor league, anything, so.
Yeah, we were just talking about this a moment ago, and I have, I have some, here we go, some better examples of that. So Rockford Park District in Illinois, naming rights to their Sports Score Downtown Sports and Health Facility. Now, so it's like an MAFC, I don't have a comparison as to if it's bigger or whatever, but 10 years, $2.1 million for one sponsor, and then the local health system sponsored another 1.9 million for three different sports facilities. One is an indoor sports center, and two are outdoors. City Woodbury, Minnesota, so they have a health and sports center, 10-year, $3 million naming rights, sports complex with the East, Health East Care System. And so, and this is all part of their proposals, so this is all public. Irvine, California, you saw the picture in the slide, $13 million over a 20-year agreement for their large, much larger park system.
So, yeah, so that's okay.
Okay.
So those are none of the facilities we have here.
Correct.
So again, it concerns me that maybe we are jumping ahead, and I hear that we're going to look at everything across town, potentially could get naming rights or sponsorships, but I, and I think, and I agree, this is a risk, and for me, this is a risk to fall. Are there no guarantees in this contract?
There's not a guarantee. There is...
Dates?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so the phase one is...
You're back.
Right.
But I'm talking about dates, where they will come up with something, some, if there was no guarantee that, like, within six months, we're going to have options for you, there's nothing like that in the contract.
It's the phase two and three. So where the...
There's no guarantees.
There is not a guarantee, but at the end of phase one, we'll have a valuation report that will give us their expert opinion on what they believe the value of a naming rights or a sponsorship would be for every amenity we want them to look at.
So that's where I think, this is to their benefit. Why have they not done their homework up front? Why are we paying to do their homework about the town of Morrisville? They want to make money.
Fair, yeah.
Because you said before, I wrote to him, you said, if we don't get paid, they don't get paid, but that's not true.
Correct.
They're getting paid, you're a part of this.
Correct. In a retainer, yes, you are correct.
So this is all, this is all geared for them to be good and golden, and if there was some kind of built-in guarantee, I wouldn't even, honestly, you know, I'd like to see the group of what we're spending. I wouldn't even need 100% guarantee. I need, there needs to be some guarantee that they're going to come back with something. I hear they're in business for 30 years, I hear they do work around here, every example of the work in the Triangle are towns that are far, far larger than we are. Even Chapel Hill is double the size and population and has far more amenities than we have. So, and who knows, maybe they have a whole different contract that costs double what this is. I, 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 I can see that, but I, I think, I, I need to have some kind of guarantee.
Understood. Oh, I, it's here.
I mean, yeah, I would like to see some kind of, like, you know, something in the contract where you evaluate it after a certain six-month period where you come in, that, so that way we know we're paying a retainer fee, that what's in the pipeline, like a sales forecast, what do you got? Because otherwise, we could be open-ended, but we're paying, and then we're not getting anything out of it. The second thing is like, also like just the size of our facilities, because I've often talked about, and maybe we're already doing this, like with our MAFC, where people could sponsor it, and then they could get memberships to reduce their healthcare costs, to keep their people, keep their employees healthy. But, you know, there reaches a point where our facility, right now, what's nice about our facility is that it's not too big, and it's very family-friendly, but if you ended up getting, like, you know, so many people coming, that they couldn't, they wouldn't, you couldn't get a lap lane, or you couldn't get a machine, because, you know, maybe, maybe not, but I just don't know how that would work. Would they, would they look at the capacity of each facility?
So they would. That would be part of the contract negotiations with the potential sponsor and what they are seeking for their sponsorship. If they're going to, you know, support a certain facility to, let's say, a $50,000 level, what would they expect for that? Their name on the building, their name on a sign, advertisement, it's those kind of things that they'll work out. They have worked with MAFC-type facilities, and they didn't bring this up to us, but I think it's a great question, is there a reduced membership expectation from a healthcare system that wants to reduce their cost by having lower memberships for their employees? So that would be something that would work out in negotiation phase. So the phase one part, so the $40,000 upfront, that's where we get a lot more clarity around the valuation and all those things. So that, that's this phase. That, as I mentioned, could, so phase two and three could start after that, but phase one can start and stop, and we can evaluate from that point. And we can see what they come back with valuation on our facilities, and maybe not a guarantee, but maybe some more clarity and answering some more of the questions around making sure that we're investing in a proper way.
A couple of questions for me, you know? Why 40,000 is a question I have.
So that's their business model.
I get it, but, you know.
And again, you know, they're...
It's a negotiable thing.
Well, we, again, we've done some negotiation with them, you know, we've also worked this through the town attorney's office to make sure that, you know, we're covering our legal basis with it. So, you know, it's a bit of a niche work to have that sort of specialty to do this kind of work, as is evident by the fact that, you know, we didn't get 10 responses to the RFQ.
So Brandon agreed they might be the only person in the world, get it, but where, you know, it goes back to me is, like, I think I don't know, Liz or Ricky said, to do this four months of evaluation, we are also paying in the contract, there are flying charges and all kind of other things, I've read the contract. And I, like, they're getting the 15%, okay, for what they're doing. So we are giving them a retainer, okay? So there's something, a show me the money type. So from my point of view, you know, they are putting all their ducks in a row, and I'm struggling to understand what is there in town of Morrisville that is so huge that they have to take four months to come and evaluate. You know, they, when they have said they have already done their homework from far there, so thing that comes to my mind, you know, so suppose they, MAFC, Church Street, Dog Park, and I run out of options after that, pretty much, you know, or town green, you know? So, like, I'm just trying to figure out, even before I do, what kind of things do they usually consider as questionable for a sponsorship, because it may not rise to the level of a higher one that pretty much the small business will pick it up, right? You know, so I'm looking for something, you know, like from them, you know, like in terms of, I'll be honest, I don't want to go like with the Ace Contract style, which is heavily tipped on their side. We're done there, been there, I want to be ensured that we are, no, like, you know, I'm going to say, I was on the museum board, we just $10 million. I don't know the contract for the company that came and did that, like, you know, Bank of America gave $2 million, SECU gave one and a half. So we had several people were giving, but have you guys checked, like, this is a standard norm? Because they might be the only one, but there are tons of other people who do marketing and like Pan Can, you know, like, they might be going and getting sponsorship. I'm just not telling, you know, world leaders. So that 40,000 sticks with me more than anything else. Yeah, they're getting the 15% and a retainer, then tell them, or they can negotiate the price to a lower price, because I feel, I do not want to go and give them a higher advantage. Show us something that they can give. I would like to know something like, okay, Church Street kind of example can get you three or four million dollars for 10 years as a ballpark. A Dog Park can get you for 10 years, say, half a million or something, like approximately, like, give me some kind of comparable examples, because I don't, after that, I run out of options. Three things that come to my mind, I don't have anything other than that, you know? Ann said a good example about Greenways, have they done sponsorship of Greenways like that? You know, have they done, what will they sell us, or what will they sponsor, is my question. That's the, that's the kind of questions I'm having back of my mind. I think the idea is right, they need to be compensated, no questions on that. Is the question of, give us some assurance, why are you the best, instead of saying, we have 30 years in the business, and what can you offer from our small-town places, is what I have.
So, again, that's, I understand the concern with the 40. That's what that money is paying them, is to come here and do assessments and look at usage or potential usage. They'll want to look at what's attendance at, for example, Church Street Park Ben. They'll look at MAFC, what's your membership, who's coming, you know, who might be interested in that? Again, is it a healthcare group? Is it just somebody that wants their name on something in town? You know, again, we have parks, we have the Greenways, we have a number of different amenities that they'll be evaluating, studying use, understanding, all that sort of thing. You know, again, it could include shelters within the park, you know, and those aren't going to necessarily be the six-digit numbers, but they're probably going to be more than the $500 or $600 we asked for, you know, at Boobash. So there's a lot of opportunities out there, so that is what that money is paying for. And I understand, it sounds like a lot of money, and that's the, that's the agreement that they have presented to us, and we have had conversations with them and negotiated, and that's where it has landed, that that's what they're willing to do it for. And unfortunately, we just don't have the expertise to do what they can do in-house.
Councilmember Scruggs, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your, I didn't see your...
If I could just go once. So I appreciate how staff has really dug in on this and done a lot of work to get us to this point. I see this as an investment. I think the $40,000 gets us essentially a price list and an idea of where we are and what we might be able to get. Three to four million for Church Street might be right, or it might be more, it might be less. I remember you talking a long time ago that we could get a lot for that. So we don't know. As you mentioned, a lot of people undervalue, overvalue, so I think it's worth the 40,000. I mean, we're paying $200,000 just to know what we can do with our cricket in the future. There is no guarantee of anything coming out of that, and that money's out the door. So this 40,000 can actually get us some return on that investment. We're hoping that Wake County Commissioners gets us hotel motel money, and that is paid back, there's no guarantees there. So I think the 40,000 is well-spent to find out where we are, what we have, what our assets are, because we're not experts. At that point, if we feel like 5,000 a month is too much, we have a good place to start, and maybe we try it ourselves, who knows? But I think that they have a model that's worked for 30 years, they're still in business, they're still getting new clients. I trust that staff has really vetted them really well. My question would be, when we get this report back, is that closed session, so that they're not telling people out there what these things are worth?
Yes.
So that's an important thing to keep in mind. We're going to know what we feel our things are worth. He's looking at the attorney like, because it's a contract, we're looking to execute contracts based on this report. It's just something to think about, but I would lean towards that, because you don't want to show your hand, you want to get the maximum you can. So those are the things I just wanted to share. I'm not looking to do this for years into the future. I think we do it once, we do it really well, and we have a good feel for where we're at.
Councilmember Scruggs, yes.
Okay, I wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to weigh in. From what council has expressed, we're all curious as to what the value of our, you know, opportunities are. We are not a big town, there is not a lot of opportunities in the town. You know, I don't think we want to look like a NASCAR town that has a whole bunch of brands on every single Greenway and park and everything, that really is not the goal. But there is a level of risk with signing $100,000 over to this company tomorrow, and I wish you would not do this tomorrow, because the work session is tonight, and we have a lot of very important feedback. I hear consensus that we are willing to do phase one, but I would not sign the contract for phase two or three. And I think the council needs to come together and look at the evaluation of phase one and determine if the ROI meets what we think is a good value for the town. How much is the cricket field worth? How much are some other things worth? I don't know, but I can bet somebody with 30 years of experience has a pretty good algorithm going, and it's not that heavy of a lift. So that $40,000 is for their expertise, it's not necessarily for their foot traffic, because one, one visit to the town and a lot of research is probably what we're going to get. I am curious, but I really urge you not to commit an annual contract until the council has had a chance to find out the discovery of this town's opportunities. So, thank you.
Is that an option where we...
Is that an option, where we just pay for Phase One? Or is the contract this 12 months?
We would have to talk to them about that.
I would feel more comfortable with what Councilmember Schragus Johnson is suggesting. Because, yeah, I mean, I kind of feel like we're being put on the spot here, like, that we're having to make a decision tonight, assign a contract for tomorrow. And I'd like the feedback from the town of Cary before I could support or not support.
So I'm thinking of this kind of in the same way as I thought about the economic development position for the town. In that we're talking about a contract that has the potential to pay for itself. I mean, I definitely, if they'll consider just a contract for Phase One, I definitely think we should do that. Because I would like some kind of assurance that they think we have enough assets here and that they can turn around contracts and sponsorships for those assets. But I think that if they, I mean, they do have a lot of leverage here in the sense that they are the experts and they're the only experts. So, you know, if they say no, I, I do still think that for one year, that it's a risk worth taking because of the potential upside.
One more thing. So I'm not sure that I understand exactly what we're doing here, but were you, were you looking for council approval? Or were you, because I thought you said in the beginning that this was kind of a, like you were running it by us as a courtesy. So I just want to understand exactly what we're doing here.
Sure. So you have given me the authority through the budget ordinance to sign this type of contract. And so again, we recognize that this is not a normal contract, it's not something we've done before. So the intent was to share with you the process we went through to get here, to move forward, because staff believes this is the best opportunity we have to try to establish a revenue generating sponsorship program. I would suggest to you that Superlative would not consider signing an agreement with us if they weren't confident that they were going to generate revenue. They're not in this for $60,000, they're not in this for $40,000, they want the 15% of some big hits. So I would suggest that that is their interest and that they're confident that they can come here and identify assets to generate that type of revenue, where they're going to see the 15% of six or ideally seven-digit sponsorships.
Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you for your feedback, very helpful to.
So we're going to reach out to the town of Cary and, and see what their experience with them has been, and we will reach out to Superlative, it sounds like, and ask if they're willing to do a phased agreement. And they may or they may not.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work. Our next item is presentation and discussion of Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan Community Outreach Summary. This will be led by Erin Hudson, our Strategic Performance Manager. And then we will have a closed session.
I think we redlined it at 45 minutes, but that may depend on question and answer, quite honestly.
Would you like to do the whole presentation first, or take questions as we go?
So, sorry, thank you, Mayor. If you'll allow me to get through the first couple of slides, then I'll indicate, yep, where I would love for you all to jump in and ask me questions and give me feedback. Okay. All right, so, good evening again, thank you for giving me a little bit of time here with you this evening. So just want to share a summary of the public engagement and outreach that we have done so far for the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan update. Prior to this evening, I just want to recap a little bit, some of the steps that we've taken to get us to this point. So to the mayor's question, if you'll wait until we get to the green engagement assessment portion, that's where I would love for you all to start sort of jumping in and giving me your questions. If you have any questions before then, if you can just hang on to those, we may actually get those answered for you. So quickly, I'll remind council that we began with an admin report to you at your October 22 meeting, and that really recapped the history of the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan, how we had seen the plan in action, how we had developed department strategic plans, and we really set the stage for the upcoming refresh that we're working on right now. We are refreshing both our department plans and our Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan, which is our organizational level plan. Next, we met with you in a work session on December 10th, and at that time, I was able to share some preliminary themes that we had collected from some staff feedback, and that really started to showcase alignment with your council budget priorities that you have established each year during your retreat. We noted at that time that our approach was going to be to quote unquote, layer this information between your budget, your C I P prioritization, this engagement process that we've just begun or just completed, our updated department strategic plans, and really allow us to prepare a fully informed and comprehensive plan update for your future consideration. At your February 11th work session, you also received a synthesis from Jeannie and Brandon of your latest emerging priorities that you discussed at your retreat in January. Again, that is to be layered into the updates of this plan. So getting into the discussion of this recent engagement campaign, strategic planning is really about telling the story of both our organization and the community that we serve in collaboration with our very talented and very intelligent communication staff. We discussed some of those best strategies and how we could really reach the community and determined that a, an established campaign theme for public outreach and engagement would really best suit. The rationale being that engagement is proven to be more successful if there's a theme that can be repeated and carried over varying mediums. So our campaign was Unite Morrisville. Unite was an acronym with each letter representing a key word in five phrases. The intent of this outreach and engagement campaign, again, which you likely saw over the last month. So if you haven't seen this, respectfully, you have not been on our social media, and you have not been looking at our website. So, the next few slides really detail a little bit about what we did for this outreach and engagement phase and why. So I'm just going to call out a few of the elements on these slides before we dive into that engagement assessment. The Language Access Plan Collaboration for this process was incredibly unique and special. I cannot speak highly enough about it. This was the first survey in town history to be offered in five languages. It really demonstrated the collaborative effort between multiple departments, multiple staff. It also illustrates the potential for future uses and future growth to serve a really diverse and unique community. And I have to tip my hat over and over again to our Language Access Plan Coordinator, Anu Mishra, because if it was not for her assistance, I would never have gotten that off the ground. We also worked collaboratively, myself, Nate Lizinski, who's not here tonight, but he has been instrumental in helping in the comms team to develop a survey that was broad enough in demographic questions that it would not dissuade people from participating, but had enough demographic questions to where we could really synthesize the information in a variety of ways, and really sort of drill down into a few different things that would help us learn in the future. That is also shared in Appendix B here. Do, again, want to just give some quick shout-outs to staff who really supported my in-person efforts and were critical to the success of this process. The comm staff, Rox, Anu, Laura, the, the budget and finance staff, Dawn and Micah, Morrisville Senior Center staff, Laura Crumpler was great at helping me identify the most opportune times to share with that group. For those of you who came early prior to the April 8 council meeting for strat chat, Brandon, Jeannie, Giselle, Pete, Mary, Michelle, Ben, and Kimberly, although not heavily attended, we did have one individual come and had good questions and was able to connect with staff, so we'll still count that a win. So, really want to reinforce that these next couple of slides are in-person engagement, and that's where we really aim to ensure that we were reinforcing the information that we were asking in our survey, but in a straightforward and streamlined way, so that we could still have alignment to that same series of questions that was going out in the survey, but also doing it in a clear and concise way that was easily replicable, so that we could continue to repeat that. It could be understood by a variety of education levels, ages, and possibly even languages. So the, the example that you see on the slide before you is the exercise that we took to the in-person sessions. Participants were asked to place a star sticker next to the priorities that were important to them personally, and they were asked to place a smiley sticker next to the priorities that were important to them as a member of the community or reflective of the community. They could be the same, they could be different. Their directions never changed across all of the in-person outreach. The priorities that you see listed here, there's 16 total, those are a composite of council's priorities that you all established between your FY25 and your FY26 budget priorities. A lot of these are also aligned with and reinforced by staff. So none of this happened in a vacuum, none of it was made up or pulled out of thin air, all of it was very intentional. So also just noted on that slide where those came from. So also just noting why we did this this way, why this approach, why this process. The, the first couple of bullets there, the, the age of our Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan, and noting that it was an organization-level plan. This is where we started to share this information with you all back in October. Our plan was bookmarked for 2021 to 2024, so it really was time to begin that revision and refresh process. And because it is an organizational-level plan, we also, again, can't do that work in a vacuum. We have to make sure that because it's organizational, it's community, we have to engage those folks and engage the stakeholders. Because it has always been a community-informed plan, we also have to have that community feedback. We need to check in with our community and understand what was and continues to be important to them, and make sure that, that we continue to sort of keep a finger on the pulse of that for them. Understanding that meeting people where they are is really one of the most effective ways to get information. As I mentioned in the previous slide, the quick prioritization activity, easily replicable, the directions never changed, we took that to each of our in-person engagement exercises. Those in-person opportunities also gave us a chance to talk with people further. They had questions, if they needed clarification, if it was a question we couldn't answer, we could get them to the right point, but we would never know if we weren't there. We had an iPad available on site, they could complete a survey if desired, we had a QR code, they could access that and then take the survey on their own time. We also had hard copy, hard copy surveys available. So if by chance they had a technology challenge or wanted to share that and think about it further, we wanted to ensure that we were meeting those needs in a variety of ways. All right. So as I mentioned, the green engagement assessment slide, this is really where I want you all to sort of jump in, and if you see something that you have a question about or you want to know more about, feel free to let me know. So, beginning with our in-person sessions, on the left-hand side, you'll see green blocks, on the right-hand side, you'll see blue. The green, those are the items, the, the priorities that were important to our in-person participants personally. The blue are the ones that were important to our in-person participants from their community perspective. The darker shaded colors along the bottom are the ones that appeared more frequently, so those appeared three or more times. Again, it's the same 16 priorities that we used in our survey and in other exercises. This is really a quick view of the most high-ranking priorities that we, we saw from those who completed the exercise. Excuse me. Important to note, there were a wide range of ages, backgrounds, experiences that informed those selections, so don't think that any of those decisions were made in a vacuum, but sharing what that, that summary was. So moving on, telling the whole picture. Like I said, strategic planning is about storytelling. So ensuring that not only do you know what the highest priorities were, but we also had some situations where there were no priorities or no priorities selected. The specified locations and dates here show where those priorities were not selected. It's also important to note that some of our sessions had low turnout or low attendance, that's also noted in Appendix C. So again, just giving you the full picture so that you don't, or so that you all understand there, there can be some outliers as well. Any questions on, at those specific locations and dates? Yes, ma'am? Yep, no problem. All right, so moving on to the survey, I'm sorry, did I hear someone else? Okay, sorry about that. All right, moving on to the survey. So this was really the, the greater opportunity, the longest, broadest opportunity to really learn what the community does or does not understand about town processes, how we use our strategic plan, and then really where we have an opportunity to share and educate further as we continue to move along and make our strategic plan as useful as possible to the community. So reflected across the top are three questions that we asked that demonstrate how our Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan is used, and how that helps us to achieve those outcomes that are supported by the community. This reinforces, again, that importance of the community perspective in so many of our town processes that I know we've talked about a lot here with council. So the first two in the blue boxes, the left and the center, maybe not really the awareness that I might have expected, because those processes have been in practice for a while. So aligning our strategic plan goals with agenda items, and aligning our strategic plan goals with the annual operating budget request. But again, just lets us know where we maybe have a little bit greater opportunity to educate the public. The one on the far right in the green, kind of surprised pleasantly, that there is a larger percentage of our population that understands that council sets and discusses and sets priorities annually, and those are also aligned with our strategic plan. So also noted some demographics here. So the way that we were able to design the survey, as I mentioned, it was just broad enough and just detailed enough. These are the Morrisville residents, the, that we drilled down to, and then the ones who answered no. So for the, the left and the center, you know, roughly about 47-ish percent do have knowledge of that, but the block in the green, that means that 70% of our Morrisville residents that participated in the survey have awareness and knowledge that you all set those priorities and that those are aligned with our strategic plan. So that's a good foundation for us to know and build on to further educate on those other two. Additionally, social media is such a, a quick, great tool for us to get information out quickly. Facebook continues to be our, our most high-performing tool. The number of times that our, our content was played and displayed, really pleasantly surprised with that as well. Again, hats off to our communications team, because we worked together to develop the, the narrative content, and they really sort of took the reins and developed the graphic content. So they really were able to put together some, some good things, some really eye-catching things as well. All right, moving on a little further into our survey results. This is where we asked participants to rank from most important to least important the six current strategic plan goals. There was consensus for There was consensus for Goal 2, which is thriving livable neighborhoods, as the top priority for individuals selecting that as what was personally important to them or what they felt was important to the community. So, that's pretty telling, because that means that resonates with them, but they think that also resonates with the community. It was then followed by Goal 4, public safety readiness, also kind of telling, because that means not only is that something that's personally important to them, they also feel that's important to the community. That also is reflected in the priorities that you all have established over the last couple of years. Conversely, the least priority consensus was Goal 5, operational excellence. That was also pretty consistent from our in-person responses and our survey responses, and I'll talk about that a little bit more here in the next slide. But, good information here as well for sort of a very general snapshot. So, this is, I think, the last sort of big dive into our survey results. Of the 16 priorities listed that we just talked about, again, noting that those were a composite of what you all had established as your priorities from FY25 and FY26, we asked our surveyed participants to rank order the ones, rank order them most to least important. 16, yes, it's a lot, but it was a drag and drop, very sort of something they could easily maneuver. Did here, it was even easy to do on a mobile device. So, glad to know that that conveyed simply. What we learned from the survey responses is that safe community ranked the highest across the board for those answering what was personally important and what they felt was important to the community. Quality of life, sustainability, and environment, also very high ranking for those answering personally important and important to the community. Conversely, future investments and recognizing successes did not rank high for either. Core Services only received a top rank by one respondent in either grouping. So, we'll sort of look at some key takeaways here, I believe, yep, in the next slide. So, this is where, again, some of that deeper synthesis really began. Some general takeaways. We walked a little bit of a fine line between the advantage of and competing with, asking for feedback around budget outreach. There's a parks survey outreach going on right now, so there's a lot of survey fatigue. There's a lot of questionnaires floating around, got a lot of questions from folks saying, is this the same as X survey, or I'm a Cary resident, I can't participate in this, which was not true for this survey. So, being able to help folks navigate that was something that we learned. Again, we found better participation and engagement in our in-person activities. We did have some limitations with staff capacity to be able to support that, even when we had some longer advertised things such as strat chat and an outreach event at the library on a Sunday, which is their most heavily-attended day. But, again, just learning opportunities for the future. One of the things that we have discussed is we are planning and have made arrangements to do a round of strategic visits to our advisory committees over the next couple of weeks, because we do want to just sort of fully round out this engagement and outreach and make sure that we get in front of them with this information. And, again, just clarify if there's any outstanding questions there. So, some of the things that we were looking for in assessing our in-person and our survey results was, do the themes and the feedback generally align with our council priorities? Is there similar individual personal preference and community preference? Are there themes among demographic groups? Are there opportunities for further education on town processes? And we've learned the answers to a lot of those. Again, we noticed that safe community, highest-ranked priority for those answering on their personal behalf and as for community importance. Quality of life, highest-ranked priority at Holy. It got two times the number of responses of the next-ranked priority for any category. Welcoming and placemaking ranked really high during in-person engagement, was the second-highest priority for community importance in the survey, but it's not fully developed in our current strategic plans. So, that may just be something that we look out a little further and may bring you some additional recommendations or some draft language on. And then, also considering that priority alignment with council, looking at that latest prioritization that you all had as of the end of March, those top 10 priorities that you settled on, your feedback, your feedback, the community feedback that we have assessed, there's clear alignment with at least six of 10 of those priorities. We could potentially even delve in a little bit further and see if there's even further So, before I bounce away from the assessment of the engagement, are there any questions on those last few slides that I covered? Oh, I'm sorry. I do not know who was first.
Me.
Okay.
You don't have to apologize. I was just curious on this Slide 11, what the bar charts?
Yes.
In the surveys, I did not take one of them myself online. Did you describe like what thriving livable neighborhood was compared to engaged, inclusive community?
Great question. So, the introduction of the survey had a link to the strategic plan webpage, which had the translations of all of the materials in all of the languages.
Okay.
So, participants were encouraged to click on those links so that they could get all of that information, but no, ma'am, the descriptions were not included in the specific question.
So, they would have had to click on something? Because just looking at that could be kind of esoteric what the difference would have been or would be, or in even, they get like operational excellence, well, what does that mean? You'd have to click on it, but hopefully, most people did that.
Yep, good question.
That's all I had.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Councilmember Scruggs Johnson.
Thank you. This is the slide I wanted to talk to as well. Of the respondents, did you differentiate between Morrisville resident and Morrisville
We did. I don't believe that I did for this question, but I did for... Actually, I will, if I could do some quick math, I don't know if I could do this in No, I do not believe that I did only Morrisville residents on this slide.
Okay, so, just curious later, you know, if you have that information. Also, did you collect information if they were a resident or they had a business in the town?
We did.
You did?
Yes.
So, I'd be curious to know how the business owners responded to operational excellence versus the residents, because I think it speaks well of the town that they didn't prioritize operational excellence, because we must be doing something right. If there was concern that we were not doing things right, I think it would rise in the priority list. So, I don't look at it as a not a priority, I look at it as a we're doing a good job, and so they don't feel that they have to talk about it as much as safety. Now, but when it comes to safety, I think that's just a general principle, it's not because we're an unsafe town. So, the two topics can be looked at independently and treated a little different. So, that would just be my outstanding question, is how did the business community respond versus the residents?
That's a good question, and to your point, some of those nuances, I think, is what we want to drill into even maybe a little bit further, and we'll get into that a little bit more with the takeaways and some of the discussion points, too, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, I clicked on the survey and the goals here. You do have a definition of each one of these goals. You do have an explanation.
On the slide?
No, on your survey, you say you have a definition of what thriving livable neighborhoods are. It goes on to say, enrich the quality of life through preservation of natural resources, blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
So...
I was thinking, no, I appreciate that. I was thinking we had just linked the full documentation, but I appreciate that. Any others? Okay, so I'm going to, let's see if I got through these. I did. All right, so I'm going to jump in to some of the discussion points. Again, just a couple of reminders, as we talked about in our October and December work sessions, staff's goal is to truly streamline our plan and allow it to really be a guiding document, and I think staff and council have a shared focus of allowing our plan to serve as a guide or a beacon or a compass, if you will, that all of our other plans and processes and programs align back to, like we've done with our department strategic plans, as we've done with our budget, with our CIP. So, we can really make it sort of the central place that everything else comes back to. So, given these goals and this focus, one of the things that we want to do is really look intentionally at our outcome measures. I know that Town Manager Zudema has had conversation with you all about that and finding ways to tell our story through meaningful data. We've had a lot of conversations with staff about that. One of the things that staff has been tasked with as they have completed these recent drafts of their department plans is using some recommendations or some ideas that Town Manager Zudema has provided. They've also gotten feedback from myself, from Nate Lozenky. We're reviewing those now, and one of the things that we've talked with them about is even though they're departmental strategic plans, a lot of our departments have really forward-facing work. And so, some of the things that they have captured in those plans, specifically some of the outcome measures, really may have organizational applicability, and what we'd like to do is elevate those. So, instead of only having them captured and tracked at a departmental level, allow those to really serve at an organizational level versus trying to establish a departmental goal and an organizational goal. I believe what we saw happen over the last iteration of our department plans and our organizational plan is some duplication of efforts, some duplication of work, and we'd really like to be able to allow everybody to work smart, not hard. So, that's one of the things that we're working with staff on, that we will be able to show you all when we come back at your May 13th meeting. Yes, sorry, lost my train of thought there for a second. Town Manager Zudema, anything you want to add about outcome measures while we're on that topic?
Thank you, Erin. So, again, I'll have an update for you more along what we're working with our data efforts, probably in this Friday's next week emailed to you, but we are working closely with the departments to let them, again, tell their story through a plan. And so, part of that story, of course, is narrative, and here's what we're accomplishing and outcomes, and then part of that story is data. So, we are working to include data to help us better define our outcomes and what we're accomplishing by the department level, and as Erin alluded to, you know, that is going to tie directly back to that strategic plan. So, I think she's headed there next, and I hope I'm not jumping ahead of you, but pulling some of the level of detail out of that strategic plan, because a lot of that detail's going to be in these department plans. And, you know, if you look at that strategic plan now, it has got a ton of information in it, you know, down through outcomes and objective measures and all this detail, and so one of the goals is to reduce that and instead rely more on tying the department plans more closely to that strategic plan. And so, we'll continue to work on that as well.
Yep, so Brandon stole my thunder a little bit, but we'll get to it. So, first question or decision, discussion point that really want to broach with council tonight is, does council generally support the current six strategic plan goals? Yes, no, if not, what recommended changes do you have? And that really leads into my second question, because there has been some discussion, not, I don't know if there was consensus, which is why it's here, about potentially elevating sustainability to a standalone goal. So, before we as staff move anything else forward with our updates to the organizational plan, just want to confirm and verify with council, do you want to stay with the six goals you have? Do you want to change any one or more of them? Do you want to add one, take one away? This is really the time for that discussion so that we can carry that forward.
You have a slide with the six goals?
I didn't add the plan in there, but that's your six goals. Transportation, mobility, thriving livable neighborhood, engaged, inclusive community, public safety readiness, operational excellence, and economic prosperity.
I hear that lots of folks didn't rate operational excellence really high, but that doesn't mean it's still a really important goal to support everything else that we're doing. So, I wouldn't, I would keep all six, for sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Staff is not advocating to eliminate any. Again, we just want to affirm we're all on the same page. Thank you.
And I think to that point, you know, some of this is an opportunity, and Erin alluded to this earlier, that, you know, people may not understand, even with the definition, what do we mean by that? And more importantly, why is it important? And, you know, and that's why we've really, the last couple of years, tried to shape the budget message a little bit differently, to focus on, you know, what is the community's perspective? What can they appreciate if we're asking for a piece of equipment or a staff member or a program? You know, not why is it important to us, but why is it important to the service we provide so they can have that community perspective of how does it help impact, et cetera, them? So, you know, what we've seen here, and you'll see similar information when we talk Thursday about the budget and some of that feedback, you know, similar things. Not a lot of responses on, for example, economic prosperity, but clearly critically important to the community, we need to help, I think, do a better job of educating around that. And, of course, Tiffany and Amelia are now here and are going to be stepping that up and letting us better explain why that's so important. And, again, operational excellence, you know, not scoring high in the budget feedback either, but critical to everything we do. So, again, it's an opportunity for us to see what does the community react to and how can we help them better understand or perceive differently what we're talking about there.
Councilmember Robati and Councilmember Fender.
So, I do think that we, it's time to elevate sustainability to the level of a goal. I mean, we already have our sustainability coordinator weighing in on every single project in the town. We are already building sustainability measures and asking developers to build them in. I think it's already one of our main goals, we just haven't articulated that yet. So, maybe something like sustainable, eco-sensitive, I don't know, focus, something like that. But, yeah, I think it's time.
So, if I may respond to that as well, and Councilmember Fender, I'll come to you next. One of the questions that I have with this discussion point is elements to include in a sustainability goal, because sustainability can be environmental, certainly, there's also social sustainability, there's economic sustainability. There's economic sustainability, environmental sustainability. So would council want it to be holistic sustainability or environmental sustainability only? So just something to consider as you think through that. Councilmember Fender.
I would say, I think adding financial sustainability or anything else waters down the whole point of drawing out sustainability and environment to make it its own strategic goal. The point, the point is, is to highlight the importance of focusing on preserving our natural resources. And I mean, it's about the environment, not, not anything else. So I would like to see it brought out. I mean, it looked like from your results from the survey that it was a high priority sustainability environment. And it regularly comes up in budget surveys and other surveys that we, we get from the public. It's, you know, parks and green space and trees are regularly comes up in any surveys we do with our residents. So I think we need to place a higher priority on it than we have been.
So again, just let me clarify, are you advocating it, advocating for it to be the seventh goal, or only because you indicated for it to be a higher priority? It's currently reflected in goal number two.
Yes, I think it should be, yeah, I don't think any of the others should be eliminated. Well-planned development, strengthen neighborhood vitality. I mean, it could be a seventh goal.
Okay. Mayor Burton?
I may have said the question is about the sustainability. I think I would like the whole holistic view of it, because not undermining the environment, but overall is also equally important for the town point of view.
Sure, Michael.
I think I do.
Yeah. You can tell when someone has their mic on.
So you would support it as a seventh goal, but with a more holistic definition?
Well, hell, then just don't make it a goal at all. The whole point of bringing it out is to highlight the environment. If you're going to add other stuff to it, it's no point in making it a separate goal.
Councilmember Johnson, then Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
So I have often talked about the need to talk about sustain, or financial sustainability of our town, because we're landlocked, less than 10 square miles. So I, too, would like to take holistic approach. I'm not sure that waters down anything. I think, I think what matters is the definition that goes into the goal. And I don't know that adding, tell me, you listed a couple of things, Erin. What did, what did you list before? You said environmental.
Environmental, there's social, there's economic.
Mm-hmm. Economic, yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm not of the mindset that that waters it down. I would prefer a holistic approach, too, and the details matter, so.
Let's just put down all our trees, just screw the whole fire. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
So sustainability, to me, includes healthy air, water, trees, and so forth, but it also is economic sustainability.
It's not. It is not. We're talking about the environment.
We have a little respect for all opinions, please.
If we could just respect the.
So.
Just kind of facilitate, please. Thank you.
Seventh goal, to me, is not environmental sustainability. It is a component of strength for our town to be sustainable, because we are working towards environmental sustainability, but we're also working towards economic sustainability.
That makes the purpose.
It is including areas of.
Let's take a quick five-minute break, please.
Okay. At least finish our thought.
Thank you. A town of our sources, our people, and we are carefully balancing sustainability. We need to be strong and viable. And I think sustainability means that we're a strong, resilient community, and we are respecting the environment as best we can, as well as ensuring the quality of life for our people. So we do have quality of life, but we're pulling out sustainability, to me, is addressing the strength of our community. And environmental can be in the definition, because it is a major component, and we're investing a lot, but we're also investing in our economic sustainability through our new role that we just executed this year. So that's how I look at that category, and think that it could be defined in a way that is not duplicative of the other six goals.
And thank you all for the comments. I think what I would offer, too, is what we may see is some rebalancing of some of the elements of the goals that are currently existing, and the, the more true environmentally-focused elements could, and I'm speaking way off the cuff, so please don't count any of this as gospel, some of the really true environmental aspects of sustainability, like environmental preservation and things of that sort, and I just cannot think of the words at the time, I could foresee those being maintained under thriving livable neighborhoods. And then these other, again, more holistic elements of sustainability being in a seventh goal, that may not necessarily be called sustainability, but speak to those, those continuing, strong, resilient efforts, using, using your words. Councilmember Robati.
Is everybody okay if we go ahead without?
Yes. I'm, I, I, we're here for a meeting. I want to do the work for the people. I want to do the work for our town, and I'm here to do it. If people want to get up and leave on their own will, that's on them. I'm here to do the work of the town.
The public should know, the public should know who leaves excuse from a meeting.
Okay. So I think I would actually take exactly the opposite approach to what you just said. I think that there are elements of sustainability that can be built into all of our principles, right? So like financial stability, financial sustainability, to me, comes under economic prosperity, when you talk about, when you talk about different types of sustainability that are under thriving livable neighborhoods, right? But I think that, that environmental sustainability, advancing environmental sustainability or, or environmental sustainability in action is a very important goal. And under, see, I think that, to me, under that, there are so many things that are important, like tree canopy preservation and alternate energy sources. And so I think, I understand what you said, and it's not that I don't think it was a good idea, but I would approach it the exact opposite way.
So again, just so I can clarify, you could foresee sustainability elements in every goal and a seventh sustainability goal?
Yeah, I mean, I think there are sustainability elements in every goal. Some of the ones that you've mentioned fit neatly under other goals. But I think that environmental sustainability is its own goal with many sub-goals, just like the others have.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you have something? Okay. Okay. Councilmember Johnson, did you have something else?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What's happening?
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You're just hidden.
I think that, the way I would look at sustainability is that, I do think it has to be eventually, I don't think my colleagues who are saying have a holistic approach are implying that we wouldn't look at the environmental part of it as a separate initiative. I think it is important. But I think, I think that, you know, when you look at our different goals, having a livable neighborhood means that you're having a sustainable community. I think, you know, inclusive neighborhoods, we want to make sure that we have sustainability policies that are, that everyone has the right to a healthy environment. I think from an economic development perspective, sustainability is important because of the clean tech and the innovation and the kind of new green jobs that we can facilitate conversation with entrepreneurship. So I think it's always important in anything that we do in Morrisville, and we've always been very holistic in terms of making sure that our goals are looked upon, all departments and all agencies. So I think it is important to have a, you know, I just don't know how you do it. I do, I do understand the concern of, you know, just saying, well, we're forgetting about, you know, having a standalone goal, what are the ways we can make Morrisville more sustainable, more environmentally friendly? But I think there's a way of doing both. I think, I think that my colleagues who have said having a holistic approach, we do this all the time in Morrisville, where we make decisions and we look at the big picture. So that's all I'm saying. I just don't know, you know, how we, how we do it.
When you said that, it made me think, this is how we do it. We're figuring that out.
Exactly.
So essentially, I support sustainability being the seventh goal. I think that's going to be really important for us moving forward. I'm very interested in knowing about what kind of outcomes and metrics we could measure for environmental, for social, for financial, and I think that will inform how we frame that goal and have it moving forward. So I'm really looking forward to digging into the department plans, because they already have measures that they're doing. They're already comparing themselves to metrics. They're, they're already identifying by department what success looks like. That's really hard at an organizational level. So I like the idea that we're going to be bringing those goals down to the departments, because we already have that data. So it's a matter of publishing that data like Knightdale does and helping that use, make our decisions. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. So sustainability is a really important goal. I like that it's already foundational across everyone, the task force, Sustainability Task Force has made it so. So that's kind of, we already have operational excellence across the whole organization as well, because that's one of our core values. So I think we're really moving in a really good direction. All this survey data, really helpful, and it helps educate and engage the community as we're doing it. So it's a win-win. It's serving a lot of purposes. So thank you very much for all of this.
So.
Mayor Burton?
I think I'm just echoing, but I'm just giving live examples. For example, take a department, Public Works. You know, they, if you look at a financial sustainability, the Public Works building that we have bought, it's, we could have gone much higher, $10 million more, that's financial. And then if you look at the amount of stuff that they worked on, sustainability measurements environmentally, you know, with EVs, and then talking about the solar and all these Bs and all those things, just taking Public Works. You take the police department, you know, their cars, and they came to us for how they can get a better deal for our radios and those kind of things. It's a financial sustainability that they're building in. Parks and Recs, you know, Parks and Recs, you look at, when, the only one time I visited MAFS, I was pretty impressed with those bikes, which are sustainability, you know? And, and Mary came three times, talking about cost recovery, is financial sustainability. Every department has it, it's not just environment asset. It is like all around, and that does not undermine in any form or shape that, you know, it's not a single point issue. It is a multi-note of, kind of, approach.
That's what I was trying to say.
So only because I don't think I've heard a true consensus, one way or the other, outside of, I think, everyone is supportive of sustainability, if council would be okay to allow myself, Town Manager Zudema, have a little more conversation internally about how we think we might be able to sort of fit this in, and we can have that as part of what we bring back to you with the draft recommendations at the May meeting, the May 13 meeting. I have a couple of ideas, but I don't want to, again, speak off the cuff.
I like that idea.
Okay.
I, we react well to something.
Yeah.
You know, when we're just talking, it's hard to visualize what it's going to look like as a goal and whatever. So yes, I like that, Erin. Thank you. Thank you.
And so I might actually offer the same thing for my, my last two discussion points, which, and I'm going to give kudos to Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, sorry, thank you, because what she said really resonated with me, too. Goal five, operational excellence, again, there were a few priorities that fall within that goal that didn't rank high. Again, doesn't mean they're not important, but it means they just might be performing really well, so much so that people don't have to consider them as important, because they just know they're taken care of. So one of the, one of the prompts that I sort of thought of was, are there other areas or opportunities where we acknowledge those? So again, I think let us think through that a little bit more. And then similarly with public education advocacy in goal number six. It was mentioned once at one of the in-person engagement opportunities. It does have some really clear alignment in one of our departmental plans. We might see some of those types of things in other departmental plans. Let us continue to look through those and see where those really clear lines are drawn and bring those things back to you with, with our May 13 recommendation, if that's fair. And Town Manager, I'm just committing you to that, too.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Let's go. All right. Get it.
All right. Really, that's all I had, letting you all know there's some things that we'll be bringing back to you, recommendations on May 13. That's going to be our sort of brief and your draft updates that you're going to see. That's going to be your fully layered approach of everything that you all have seen, and we've been working on really since October of last year. And then June 10th, if all the stars align and you all feel good about it, then we'll bring a resolution for approval back to you at that time. Thank you all. Good discussion. I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope that you join us again. As always, you can reach your town council at towncouncil@morrisvillenc.gov. I entertain a motion to adjourn in advance of our closed session. No, no, sorry.
No, you have to go to closed session.
I entertain a motion to go into closed session at this time, and it's right there.
Yeah, pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.318.11A6, I move that we go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Rao, a second from Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. All those in favor of going to closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you.
Let's take five minutes, and please try to be. Well, let's take five minutes and please try to be.